Helpful, yes, I agree.
Let's do that again, because you're on TV.
All right, let me call to order the Malibu Regular Planning Commission meeting for February 4th, 2019. Kathleen, could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Here.
Chair Euring.
Here.
You have a quorum with Commissioner Marks absent.
Okay, and Commissioner Marks calls, he will be here shortly, he's on his way, he just got hung up. Okay, could we have a pledge of allegiance?
Sir, did you pledge allegiance? I'll tell you. Please rise. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Who will be attending?
May I move the agenda as staff proposes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posting the agenda. Kathleen?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January 25th, 2019.
Thank you very much. Ceremonial presentations, we do not have any, but we do have a ceremonial prayer.
It's not ceremonial exactly, but it is a presentation.
All right.
From our coastal engineering staff and public works staff.
Oh, we're going to do that there, okay.
Yes.
Even better, so we do have a presentation. And this is the presentation on the topic of?
Wave uprush studies and floodplain review.
Okay.
So this is Rob Dubow, our public works director.
Right. And Rob, as you do this, since there are people here and probably watching at home who may not know what wave uprush and all this stuff means, if you could sort of maybe give us in your preamble what it is we're doing, why it's important, and how it's used, I think will give everybody a perspective of why we're doing all this.
Is Rob going to be on TV?
Yes, why not?
It'll be a combination of him and his PowerPoint.
Okay, there's a camera over there, though. We don't have to make him go up here when he talks.
Right, yeah.
Okay, and I assume you want to wait till questions at the end, is that how you prefer to have it?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
So, the purpose for tonight is to just give you everyone a background, what Public Works does when we're reviewing development projects that are located in the FEMA floodplain. So, that's the purpose of kind of give the commissioners kind of an idea of what we do in Public Works. Give you a little background on FEMA floodplain or FEMA flood insurance program. It's a, it's a program that's subsidized by FEMA that provides low insurance rates to property owners, so long as the city participates in this program. And what FEMA requires us to do is to have certain development regulations, make sure that developments that are in the floodplains meet certain criteria. And so I'll go into some of those criterias as we go along the presentation. Malibu municipal code section 1520 provides development regulations for properties located in high-risk flood zones. So, we use those maps in Public Works to really look at, to see where the project is located, and use those standards and those development standards to apply to those new development projects. Currently FEMA has maps that are, that were adopted back in 2008, and we use those for certain areas. Right now FEMA, or FEMA back in 2011 started the process of revising the floodplains along the coastal, coastal areas along Malibu. As, as you know or may not know, the city applied for an appeal to these preliminary maps, and we are in the process of appeal. There's been comments back and forth between us and FEMA, and we're pursuing forward on doing that appeal. I can ask more questions when we get back to that part, but, so that's, that's kind of a little bit of the background. Here's a, kind of a sample of the current floodplain map. On this map you'll see some blue shaded areas, that's where the flood maps or floodplains are located. In there you'll see a couple of different data information on there. You'll see different flood zones, you'll see floodzone VE, zone AE, zone A. You also see some elevations, and the elevations are important because those give you the base flood elevation of, of the structure and the requirements that I'm going to further talk about later on. Here's a sample of the preliminary flood map, and as witnessed by a lot of us who have reviewed these maps, the elevation of these floodplains has, has risen significantly in some area, in particular this area right here, which is along Malibu Road. It's raised to an elevation 31, which I believe it was previously around 17 or 18. So, like I mentioned before, the city participates in this national flood insurance program, and FEMA requires us to follow certain development standards. And development as in, as it relates, as it, as it defined by FEMA includes any man-made change in a map zone. And particularly what we're looking for is new construction projects and substantial improvements. And you can see what substantial improvements, what, what that means, it's additions and what's not to, to any, any project that's currently built. So here's a couple of nice photos I threw in there of kind of what new construction, I think we all know what new construction is, and there's a picture of substantial improvements, a remodel that's going on. So, new development. Public Works reviews new development, and we use the FEMA flood maps to determine the location of the development. We look at that because each development will be in a particular flood zone, and those flood zones will dictate what standards we use when we're, when we're reviewing and putting conditions on these projects. There's, there's two major flood zones that we're looking at, which is the VE flood zone, which, which we are looking at, the standard for where we're kind of measuring the height of the building is the lowest horizontal structural member. And then the AE flood zone, which we look at the lowest floor and elevation, and, and those are two little subtle differences, I'll show you in next slides on what the difference is on those two. The final thing is we require when we're looking at new developments or redeveloped projects is requiring property owners to submit an elevation certificate. Those elevation certificates are helpful, it proves to FEMA that we're following their, their guidance, and it provides other important data to the property owner. So here's a, here's a sample of a development that's in the VE flood zone. The building's put on piles, and you can see the lowest floor, and below the lowest floor is the lowest horizontal structural member. And what we do, look at these elevations or these projects, we look at to see where that elevation is for the lowest horizontal structural member, and as it relates to the base flood elevation. And what we require is that that lowest horizontal structure member must be raised above that base flood elevation. So for example, if you're in a, along the coastline, and the base flood elevation is 20, that lowest horizontal structure member must be slightly above 20 elevation. Another requirement that is for this area is that the bottom of the structure must be free of obstructions, and that's to allow the waves to come up and down and not cause any problems with the structure. But as we know, a lot of the structures along the coastline have their septic systems underneath their house, and which requires a sea wall to protect it. And in those situations, we, we evaluate those properties, and there's a variance procedure that we could, we can go through to make sure those properties are moving forward. But in those situations, the house is raised up above the base flood elevation, and the only structure, the only thing that's non-conforming is the wall. The second one, as I mentioned, is the new development in AE flood zone. On this one here, it's, it's showing the finished floor elevation, and that finished floor elevation must be a foot above the base flood elevation. So, it's a little subtle differences between the VE and the AE zone, but that's, that's the main difference. We make sure that the finished floor elevation is one foot above it. So, in the same situation, if the base flood elevation is 20, we make sure that the finished floor elevation is at 21. So, as I mentioned too, an elevation certificate is required to, to get approval from the public works department. What that does, it's a FEMA document that makes sure that, that we're following all the, all the requirements for FEMA and their program to make sure that we're still able to provide low insurance rates to the property owners. It also gives the property owner a nice document showing what the elevation of their property is, or what their structure is, and it's used to determine what their insurance rate for those properties. So, another category that we look at is like, was the, was the remodel projects, and we look at those and we determine if those remodels are substantial improvements. And, and substantial improvements is really the cost to improve a structure in a floodplain, which equals or exceeds 50% of the market value of the structure prior to the start of the work. So this applies to substantially damaged buildings regardless of the source of damage, and that's a direct definition from FEMA what that is. And so what does that mean? So, when we get these projects that are located in, in the FEMA floodplain, Public Works requires two separate things. We, we ask for the market value of the, of the structure. So we ask for an appraisal of the structure, make sure that we have that value. The second thing we ask for is the value of improvements, and so the applicant will submit in cost estimates of what that value is, and if that value of the improvements is 50% or more, then we treat it as substantial improvements. So what that does is that we treat that as, as if the development has new, new development, and they have to make sure the current building and structure meets our, meets the flood, floodplain elevations and everything, all the development standards we have for that project. And that's all I have for my, I'll be happy to answer questions. If you want to answer them now, or you want to wait till the end, I'll be, I'll be available.
Questions?
On that last point, you were talking about relating the value of the improvements to the value of the property, but earlier you said cost of the improvements. So, is it the cost, is it how much it's going to cost to, to do the improvement, or is it the increment in value that the improvements are going to bring?
So, it's the, it's the cost of the improvements. So, it's the cost of the improvements, and, and then that's compared to the actual value of the structure.
Okay, so, so presumably the applicant provides that, what's to prevent the applicant from lowballing the estimated cost of the improvements and thereby escaping the, the substantial improvement category?
So, so fortunately, we're really sticklers about what kind of forms and what kind of estimates that we get from the, from the contractors. We kind of know, we have a ballpark figure of what those cost estimates should be based on our experience for doing this for, for a number of years, and so we ask for a very detailed cost estimate from, from the, from the applicant to what it is. And from that, then we can compare it to actually the plans on if that really makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, we ask them to revise it to make sure it's correct.
Question on that?
To be clear on that same question, you're talking about the value of the structure, not the value of the property.
Correct, it's, yeah, it's the value of the structure because that's, it's a value of the property is substantially more than the, than the structure.
John?
You say you know what it costs, but do you have an absolute low number? For example, it's virtually impossible to build a house in Malibu for under $300 a foot, it's more like 500, whereas in the valley it's, what, 100? Do you say whenever they come in, it's like 100?
Oh, no, no, we're between 450 and $500 a square foot. That's our, that's our valuation that we kind of use as, as a, as kind of a real thumb.
Okay, and then, how, how do you value the, in most cases you've got a funky old house, and they're making it nice. How do you value a funky old house?
We ask for a professional appraisal of the struct, of the structure.
Not including any land value?
Correct.
Now, we get, we've had a couple of variances for FEMA to come through, and they weren't just for the septic tank, they were for a lot more footage than a septic tank. They were like, the floodplain was measured at 14 and they wanted 21 or something. Do you do that?
No, the variances that we've been issuing, especially for the last seven to 10 years, have been strictly for the sea wall that's located under an elevated structure. It's not, in every situation that, that I've been involved with, the building has met the FEMA base flood elevation requirement. The only requirement that it hasn't met was free of obstructions, and so that wall needed a variance to make sure it can proceed forward with development, because that sea wall is protecting the septic system, tank, and everything else. Without that variance, then the, the property owner wouldn't be able to develop.
Well, we get, we get houses all the time that have their mechanical below the bottom floor, hanging down below the building, in the flood, FEMA flood zone. Is that improper?
Yes, the, every situation that we've seen that, that hasn't, we have not approved any structures with, with mechanically equipment below the base flood elevation.
We've approved quite a few, so we better check that. Now, just for anybody's listening, the first of this month, the law changed on FEMA insurance, and mortgage companies are now required to take private mortgage insurance by law. So that may or may not change things, but my biggest question always has been, we get houses that come in, and you, when you do a, when you do a house on the ocean, you do the first 50% off the street level, and then the second 50% off of the beach level. And we get these houses that are always exactly the same, flat floors, and the uprush changes as much as, well summers, one guy came in and said that the standard for sea level rise the next 100 years is 17 inches. We had another house that was seven feet, we had another house that was 48 inches. What is the official sea level rise that we're supposed to look at?
So, I, I believe that answer is going to be brought in somewhere else. I'm looking at the development standards for properties that are in the coastal flood zone, or in flood zones, and we're looking at those requirements. We're not looking at uprush or anything, this is strictly a requirement from FEMA where we're looking at elevations of the structure as it relates to those floodplain maps.
As of, now, that brings up another question. The city council told us to consider the new maps, the maps we're supposed to be working off. It sounds like you're working off the old maps.
So, the areas where, along the coastline, where the new preliminary maps are being developed, we are using those for, for those developments. Anywhere else where the, the preliminary maps doesn't affect, we're using the old maps.
So in other words, there's no change between the two?
No, if it's, if it's, if it's an old map, it's not along the coastline, it's more along a creek or another drainage channel, it's not along the coastline. If it's along the coastline, we're using the preliminary maps.
Okay, now, the new.
Do you have more of your presentation, or is this, you're done?
Yeah, I'm done with, I'm done with what I need to do, yeah.
Okay.
So, the new FEMA maps do not include waterways, correct? And the old ones did? You showed us Malibu Creek, but as I understand it, they did not map that this time?
So, the preliminary maps are only the coastline, so when they revise, or when they, when they have the final maps, they will include the old information that was on the, along the creeks and other channels.
Do you do anything at all with wave uprush studies?
Absolutely not.
That's all the planning department?
It's the city's coastal engineer that you're going to hear from next.
Oh, okay. That's, yeah, that's what we're wondering. So, when you give a certificate of elevation, you're, you're certifying that the elevation is the same as the map, or higher?
So, we're, the elevation certificate is, is certifying the elevation of the building as it relates to the base flood elevation on the FEMA maps. So, for example, if, if, if the building is in a VE zone with the base flood elevation of 20, on that, on that form it says what's the lowest horizontal structural member, they would say 20.2, which is higher than the 20. So that, that document really certifies that they are, they are meeting that requirement.
Okay, so when we get a house, a series of houses along the beach, that, where the road goes up and down, but all the houses just happen to be lined up with the road, the FEMA map is supposed to be going up and down and level?
Unfortunately, the, the FEMA maps do go up and down, but they don't go literally to the road.
No, I'm just saying, the ocean's flat, okay? The road on, like Malibu Road, for example, goes up and down.
Correct.
So we'll, we'll have one house that's, the road's 15 feet off the ocean, and then the next house is five feet off the ocean. But they all seem to line up when they come to us.
It just happened to be those last couple ones actually lined up to be right on where the road is.
Within an inch. Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll do the wave uprush.
Sorry, I got, yeah, a couple of quick ones. So I'm just curious with the, I recognize there are kind of two maps we work with, one for the coast, one for kind of creeks and stuff like that. How do we kind of lay the experience, what we actually observed from, say, these recent rains, for changes to, or, you know, adopting those maps at all, or does that factor in, or do we just go by what is stated on those maps as kind of the quote-unquote gospel for what to work with?
That's, that's a very good question, very good. And currently, right now, I'm, I'm working with FEMA on kind of that issue, and really trying to identify if we see any major issues with the FEMA flood maps based on what we're experiencing out there. So, good question. I don't have the answer, but we're still looking, we're looking at that, and FEMA is asking the same question, too.
Good, so we'll let experience from what we're seeing now influence that, that interpretation or guidance as we go forward?
It, it could, it's, it's information that they will use probably for future revisions or just information later on, but if it's something that's significant that we see that we need to change now, we'll proceed with that process of actually changing that.
Okay, and then the other one, and I don't know if I'm going to phrase this very well, I'll do my best, though, that 50% improvement slide you had up there.
Yeah.
Is that just related to reconstruction for FEMA calc's on what's allowable, not allowable? Something like this? What's the relevance of that particular slide?
So, the 50% rule is our determination if it's substantial improvements. If it's substantial improvements, then we treat the project as if it was new construction. If it's not substantial improvements, then the property owner or the applicant doesn't have to follow any FEMA regulations, they can just do what they need to do to do those improvements. So let's say it's a house that's, it's just going to be real simple, $100,000, but they're doing like a $10,000 kitchen remodel. Well, that's under the 50%, and so there's not going to be any new FEMA regulations attached to that project.
But that's only for reconstruction from some type of natural event, or any remodel?
It can be any remodel, it can be from substantial damages, you know, and/or substantial improvements, it's just substantial improvements. That's the category.
Okay, thank you.
That standard is different than the standard in chapter 17, so, which says 50% of the walls.
Right, so that's, yeah, that's, that's different than the planning requirements for the substantial, substantial part of it, for planning and.
So if we see something on the, on a FEMA, in a FEMA area, we need to get both. From you, we need to get the 50% value, and from Bonnie, we have to get the 50% of the walls.
Right, and so, so Bonnie and planning will go cover that part of it, and then we'll cover the 50% substantial improvement part of it.
Question?
Okay, go ahead.
Is there any consideration of or provision for piecemealing on the repairs if somebody wants to do a small bit, and then come back, what, a year later, or how do you, how do you break that out?
That's, that's another excellent question, ones that FEMA and ourselves have gone back and forth. I mean, obviously, if, if it's a piecemeal that we know what's going on, we, we keep those records, and, and we see those going on. But if it's over a substantial amount of time, we, FEMA has given us the discretion to use our judgment to make those determinations if it's a piecemeal or not. Absolutely.
Commissioner Marks, you off that? Thank you very much.
This is Mike Phipps, he's the city's coastal engineer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, just like Rob was asked, I'm up here to give you kind of an overview of coastal engineering and, and what we're doing in terms of the review of coastal engineering submittals to the city here. My name is Mike Phipps, I'm a geologist with Cotton Shires and Associates. We have a, we have a peer review team for coastal engineering that consists of people from our firm and Geodynamics who are teamed with in the contract. And so Ali Abdal-Hawk, Franklin Fong, Lauren Doyle are all engineers that I work with every day reviewing these reports. And we've all worked together over a number of years and have really good working relationships with the local coastal engineers. The scope of what we do starts with attending, you know, working the public counter, we're meeting with applicants, we're often making determinations of submittal requirements. People will come to us with, you know, I've got a CDP, I've got an APR, planning sends them down to us, and we take a look at what they have and, and make determinations as to what, what kind of report they need to submit, or do they need to submit a report. We are routinely reviewing coastal engineering reports. When we're doing those, we're also doing site visits to check the site conditions. We review development plans, and we review repair plans, often bulkhead, timber pile, cross bracing, any, most of the old wood structures that have been built over the years are really aging, and we're seeing lots of repair plans. Just to give you some background on policy and how it's evolved, the earliest document that I've ever seen is the LA County Beachfront Construction Policy, that, the version I have is from 1983, and it was a nine-page document that basically said, yeah, go to state lands, go to coastal, get your, get your zoning approval, and, and, you know, build the project a certain way. And I think that that policy was kind of followed in the early days of the city until the LCP was adopted. And so now, you know, the reports are required under chapter four of the, of the Land Use Plan, and we are finding ourselves immersed in chapter nine, chapter 10, and sometimes chapter 13 of the LUP, the LIP, which contains the development standards and things that we're, that we're reviewing. More recently, in 2013, 2014, the, the previous coastal engineering staff that was here finally prepared a set of guidelines for the preparation of coastal engineering reports. And those, those need to be updated, and it's something that is a matter that we want to deal with this year. So as we get projects, I just wanted to list, what are the triggers for coastal engineering reports that come across, you know, for the projects that come across our, our desk or at the counter? Sometimes we'll just get a set of plans referred to us. It's any new beachfront development, that's a pretty broad, broad term, but, you know, anything requiring new foundations, beachfront additions and remodels that would result in changes or upgrades to the onsite wastewater treatment system. When that happens, we require that whatever shore protection structure is out there, and sometimes it's a really old sea wall, we ask that that be evaluated by the, by the coastal engineers, and basically certify that it's okay, and it's, it's still sufficient to protect that structure, that new OWTS, or that OWTS component, or maybe they need to construct or maybe they need to construct a new seawall, a taller seawall, or a more robust seawall. Another trigger is, you know, oceanward expansion of a building element on a beachfront property. That might be a deck, that might be a room addition. Those are more critical than maybe something on the street side of the property. Another one is a new onsite wastewater treatment system that's behind an existing shore protection device. And again, we ask for that shore protection device to be kind of recertified. And we look at, you know, the certain repairs that come across our desk of either shore protection devices or foundations, or even rocker vetments, requires some kind of a coastal engineering report. So, here's some interesting before and afters, just as to why we have to have coastal engineering reports. Because the, you know, the beachfront area is full of dynamic processes between the wave action, the tidal action, the wind blowing, and what that does to the level of the beach with the beach sand going in and out. These are basically pictures of the same location on the beach. And obviously, the photo on the left, the beach is pretty fully scoured, there's riprap exposed, and the waves are crashing onto the structures. And in the other picture, the beach has completely replenished itself and is really high, and the staircases are submerged. So, these beaches, they change every day, and the sand levels go up and down. The most critical sand, the most critical levels are when this beach is fully scoured, and you get waves coming in and crashing on the buildings. And so, those are the things that are most specifically focused on. Here's another example, I love this one. This is the same, picture of the same property on La Costa Beach in nineteen eighty-eight when we had some really severe high tides and wave action. This beach was probably fully scoured, and you've got these waves crashing around in the building, in the corner of that building. And here's that same building in the right-hand picture with a big fluffy beach in front of it. So, just to give you an idea of the kind of things that can happen. And that was literally one month later that that second photo was taken. So, the beach builds itself back up very quickly. Some of the elements that we require and look for in the reports, we often see a presentation of historical mean high tide line locations, and obviously, those are critical because the development has to be set back from the most landward mean high tide line. Wave run-up analyses or wave uprush, they're kind of used interchangeably. From design storm waves is common in almost every report. The consultants come up with a design storm scour profile, also known as a designed beach profile, which is basically the lowest one percent of the beach profile that it can get to. Sea level rise and stillwater levels have to be determined for them to do their wave uprush analysis. They present tsunami risk evaluations, they typically identify the FEMA flood zones, zone or zones that the property is in, and then there's a lot of recommendations. And just to give you a quick little diagram of kind of what wave uprush looks like, you guys can't see my cursor, can you? I've been pointing at this. You have a scour profile, which is basically the beach level in tan, and, you know, the consultants have to come up with a designed stillwater level, which is a combination of a design high tide level, which is typically plus six feet mean lower low water. And then, on top of that, they will add sea level rise and sometimes storm surge to come up with a designed stillwater level. And then, the critical waves are run in on that stillwater level, and the uprush is determined, you know, how far up the beach does the breaking wave make it? And that might be the beach, it might be a structure that is being evaluated on, it might be a rocker vetment, and it might be looking at overtopping on a seawall. So, the uprush and the calculations can take different forms for different types of structures. And this is just a little diagram of some of the common terms that we read in these reports in terms of the different zones on the beaches. You know, the mean high tide line, the mean low tide line, there's often longshore bars offshore that actually protect the beach in the wintertime and cause the waves to break out there sometimes. And I think that's all I wanted to say about that. We do have all of these backshore beach types in Malibu, we do have a few kind of remnant dune areas. We have cobble beaches, we've got a lot of bluff-backed beaches, and we have some, I guess I would call coastal armor-backed beaches that are, either have seawalls or rocker vetments along them. And I think as we all know, those are the things that we're trying to avoid constructing. That's what the Coastal Commission doesn't want, is they don't want seawalls. And the only time they're allowed really is to protect an onsite wastewater treatment system in new development. You can't just put a seawall up to protect your new house. So, the houses have to be designed for all of the full design wave and flood conditions, assuming the seawall is not there. One of the really interesting things that I mentioned earlier is how much the beach changes. This is just another diagram of showing how the beach profile changes. And, you know, in the, in fair weather, we get the beaches rebuilding, and in storm weather, the beaches tend to scour, and you get these way different profiles. And so, the foreshore slope at the beach in Malibu typically oscillates forty feet in either direction. You can get eighty feet of oscillation, and in many cases, or in a couple of cases, I've seen two hundred feet. This is a map of some historical mean high tide lines adjacent to the lagoon. And the mean high tide line is the same elevation measured in different years along the shoreline. And so, you've got these different lines that have been drawn on here, and the most landward one and the most seaward one are nearly two hundred feet apart between nineteen twenty-eight and nineteen sixty-one. So, the shoreline, you know, can move significantly. That doesn't mean necessarily that it's eroding, this is kind of the natural process of what happens at the beach. Some of the coastal engineering recommendations that we are typically reviewing, and Rob covered a little bit of this because he sees this, too, in the floodplain review. The minimum finished floor elevation and building location is one of the primary recommendations that consultants make. And that's based upon their wave uprush studies, understanding what is the maximum breaking wave height, what is the potential overtopping on a structure. And then, they will recommend the minimum finished floor elevation to be, you know, above that uprush elevation. And sometimes, because I understand the FEMA, the new FEMA maps don't include sea level rise, we see that these finished floor elevations are getting recommended higher than the FEMA flood elevations because the site-specific wave uprush study, which is different than the regional FEMA study, it determines a higher uprush. And so, you'll get some variation in the finished floor elevations just because you're getting a site-specific analysis on every property. Another component is the elevation of lowest horizontal structural member that they recommend. And that's basically the, you know, the BF E Structure Foundation members that are going to be, basically, you want those to be above the wave impacts as much as possible. So, that will be recommended in the reports. They typically cover foundation type and depth and recommend a distance that those foundations need to go below that design storm scour profile. They'll make recommendations regarding sighting of the new onsite wastewater treatment system. Those systems, the LCP demands that those be at the most landward feasible location. Same for shore protection devices, needs to be at the most landward feasible location, and they'll recommend those if they are necessary to protect the wastewater treatment systems. There are some areas of town where Broad Beach, for example, the consultants will do their wave uprush analysis, and the beach is still wide enough that where the wastewater treatment systems go, you don't need a seawall to protect. They have to do those analyses, assuming that the big rocker vetment that's out there, the Broad Beach GAD, they have to assume that that's not even present because the Coastal Commission considers it a temporary structure. So, seawalls are not required everywhere, but there are many narrow beaches in town, and for new development, they're almost always required. The consultants will recommend design wave loads and forces on the proposed structures. They'll recommend things about construction materials, and they'll cover a review of impacts that need to be covered as discussed in the LIP. I wanted to cover a little bit, a couple of topics of what I would say topics of high interest, and sea level rise is one of them. And the FEMA flood hazard zone mapping and impacts is the other, which Rob already covered. So, I'll go into sea level rise a little bit. As I've been working in this field for, you know, pretty heavily for the last few years, in all the documents I've reviewed, I think there's kind of a rapid evolution of sea level rise estimates and sea level rise science going on in the world. And there's been more and more documents coming out more frequently, and it's very interesting, and it's concerning. But I want to give you kind of a framework of what we've been doing here at the city, because, Mr. Mazza, you asked this question earlier. In twenty fourteen, reports that were submitted here were using kind of a minimum of nine to twelve inches of sea level rise typically. And that was based on some, typically on some old EPA studies that were done prior to the year two thousand. If you look at the Santa Monica Tide Gauge, you can actually go into the tide gauge and look at, you know, a historical graph of what sea level rise has actually done. And if you put some probability brackets on that and extrapolate it, it predicts linearly that sea level rise is going to go up about seven or eight inches in the next hundred years. The problem is that the scientists believe now that sea level rise is going to accelerate. And so, a study came out by the NRC in two thousand and twelve, and it was considered the best available science. In two thousand and fifteen, in August of two thousand and fifteen, the Coastal Commission adopted that study. And basically, it was a regional study, and so, these values that I have listed here are basically everything south of Cape Mendocino. So, that's a big stretch of coastline. And, you know, twenty, the year twenty to twenty thirty, two to twelve inches of sea level rise, twenty thirty to twenty fifty, somewhere between five and twenty-four. And if you look at the twenty fifty to twenty one hundred timeframe, seventeen to sixty-six inches. So, that's, you know, about a foot and a half to five and a half feet. And so, you know, we face the question of, what are we supposed to do with this? And so, we met with the local coastal engineers and with city staff, and we discussed this. And in twenty sixteen, we decided to start requiring eighteen inches of sea level rise for a hundred-year planning window. That would get us at least to the lower bound of what the Coastal Commission had adopted. And we asked the consultants to also address, you know, what are the impacts? Should sea level rise be greater than that eighteen inches? You know, what are the adaptation strategies that could be employed for this property? Can it be modified, can it be adapted to deal with that situation? And so, we are getting that kind of information in the reports now. And then, last but not least, you know, the state issued new sea level rise guidance in April of two thousand and eighteen. And the sea level rise science is becoming more dynamic and more interesting, and it includes probabilities of occurrence now. It looks at greenhouse gas emission scenarios, like, are we going to really mess up the planet and continue on the path that we are, or are we going to cut back our greenhouse gases? It looks at all these different scenarios and comes up with something that's even more difficult to interpret. So, I need to put my glasses on to look at this. This is a list of the projections that came out of this document for Santa Monica Bay Tide Gauge. And as you can see in the left-hand column, it looks at different greenhouse gas emission scenarios, high and low, for different timeframes. And then, it gives a probabilistic projection of what might happen. Fifty percent probability, sixty-six percent, five percent probability, which is a one in twenty chance, or a half a percent probability, which is one in two hundred. And they also want people to take a look at risk aversion and decide, okay, what type of project is this? And what level of risk do we need to be thinking about for a beachfront project versus a nuclear power plant? And so, my understanding is that the Coastal Commission is currently working, they're taking, still taking public comment on guidelines for residential development, and really what we should be using. So, to answer Mr. Mazza's question, you know, right now, we're using eighteen inches. Some consultants will use more than that. I've seen two to three feet used in some analyses. And they will provide a discussion of analyzing greater sea level rise, you know, should it happen. But these, you know, these scenarios are really interesting, and they're pretty scary. And we, right now, we don't know, you know, should a beachfront home be a low-risk or a medium to high-risk aversion situation? So, it's difficult, and then what kind of emission scenario do you want to adopt as a city? And then, what should we be using for sea level rise? That's really what it comes down to. And so, this is, this situation is in limbo, I think, until the Coastal Commission comes out with their guidance, and it puts us in a tough position. That's all I got. Any questions?
Okay, well, just on that last point, just looking at your chart, it looks like the most risk adverse, the best-case scenario only gets us to twenty seventy at eighteen inches. That's the best case. And it seems like we're also hearing almost daily about new reasons that sea level is going to increase. Like, you probably read about the Thwait Glacier and Thwait's Glacier, and, yeah, and that's like two feet, pretty much no matter what, within the next fifty years sometime. So, it seems like clear that we have to get beyond the eighteen inches. Now, I have a question relating to this about seawalls, and I've heard on the commission before some discussion about side scour. When you put in a seawall in front of one house and you have a long row of houses, you're affecting all the other houses that may or may not have seawalls. And I'm just wondering if you, when you're looking at new construction or rebuilding something and putting in a seawall, are you talking to the neighbors and getting them in any way to collaborate or communicate about, this is really a unified feature that might have ten, twenty houses kind of all in a row, some which have seawalls and some don't, and are going to be affecting each other? And maybe one has an eighteen-inch sea level plan now, and somebody else comes back in two years and gets a five-foot reading. How do you coordinate houses over that sort of communal zone?
Well, I can tell you what we do do, we look at projects on an individual basis. We ask the consultants to always consider the impacts of, the lateral impacts of the placement of seawall because sometimes if there's nothing adjacent to it, then they're going to have basically a fortress around their property with return walls because they have to protect that property from flanking waves. And, you know, you have other places like the Colony where you've got a continuous seawall for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet. So, we look at projects individually, we ask the consultants to address the impact of the construction of the seawall on adjacent property, including, you know, will it result in increased erosion? You also have circumstances where... You also have circumstances where you, property maybe have to rely on an adjacent property's seawall to provide flanking protection. And so we handle that, the consultants address that in the report and they say, yes, you need to rely on it. And we actually require a covenant for that so that the property owners acknowledge that, yes, I'm relying on this adjacent property seawall and I need to monitor that and maintain it. So those are challenging circumstances. Now, in terms of, of, you know, what do we do about what happens over time and one project that's built for one standard and one for another? I don't know. I mean, that's a great question. We, we don't necessarily address that. I've gone out and looked at sites and I, I walk out to the properties and there's one seawall that's three feet higher than the other. And some of that is, might be the conservatism of the, of the designer, some of that might be two different methods of analysis and 25 years difference in, in age. I mean...
So that might counsel to be going with the higher numbers now so that assuming things, levels may be going up over time, it'd be more likely to still be in the same range 10 or 20 years from now when the guy next door comes for a permit. What about, we know beach sand comes and goes, but at the same time, erosion is continuing. We have less replenishment because of just the way rivers are structured up along the coast and what we actually get with the current now in terms of any sand flow.
Yeah.
Is that not in your calculations that, that we will have on average, less sand over the next decades?
That, that's a pretty dynamic situation as well. There are, there have been a few studies along the way. In 1994, the Army Corps of Engineers did a kind of a reconnaissance level study of all of the Malibu coastline and, and it really concluded that there'd been little change in, in the, in the coastline in terms of coastal erosion between 1928 and 1994 when the study was done. And 1928 is basically the, the last date where it was considered, you know, undeveloped legally. There was basically pre-development. So, and what's happened since then is that we've, we've built dams, we've built debris basins and, and we've choked off hundreds of thousands of yards of sediment that otherwise would have made it down to the ocean. And, you know, so there still is sediment that makes it to the ocean and it, you know, the, the, the littoral cell that, that Malibu sits on also receives sediment supply from, by Point Magoo. But, you know, the, the long-term scenario is hard to, hard to predict because if sea level rises, you're going to get more coastal bluff erosion, which is going to provide a source of sediment. And, and then kind of conflicting with that is we're trying to protect development and the higher sea level goes, the higher the sea, the seawalls get and you're going to have more seawalls. And so it's this, it's a conundrum.
Which seems to be counseling for a higher standard. I guess that's good, that's good for me for now.
Could you give us an idea what the sea level rise has been in Santa Monica?
I think over the past 100 years, it's been around four inches.
Okay. And how about the last 10 inch, 10 years?
I, I don't know that.
It's not, is it accelerating?
It's measured in millimeters. The, the rate is on the order of 1.1 millimeters per year.
But it's, you say, has it been accelerating or not?
I don't think you can, you can see that from, from the graph and the data that's presented.
So sea level rise from here on is, is theoretical. It's not a continuation of a curve.
Yeah, there's several approaches you can take. I mean, people look at things linearly and say, well, that means that things are going to continue the way they have in the past, you know, or you, you have to consider other factors. There are places in the world where sea level rise appears to be accelerating. And we obviously have a lot of issues going on with, with global warming and loss of continental ice sheets and glaciers melting and all that stuff. So...
But, but my question is, in Santa Monica, there's no evidence of that?
The tidal gauge says what it says. I mean, it is what it is. And, you know, what we do is we assign, you know, sort of error brackets to that and say, okay, if, you know, if we look at a 95% probability, you know, maybe you, maybe it's a little more, so maybe it's going to be seven or eight inches. The other thing you got going on is, is, you know, hey, we're at the south end of, of the transverse ranges right here and, and there's uplift going on in the earth's crust. And I don't know off the top of my head what the rate of uplift is. It, it happens episodically in earthquakes. But, you know, if it were a millimeter a year...
No sea level rise.
Happening at, happening at the coast, that might offset the sea level rise somewhat. So all the scientists know, you have to take that into consideration and maybe this is why the ranges get wider and wider as you go over time.
Now, did I understand right that you say you, you measure the beach level as the lowest 1% of the range? Because when we see charts coming to us, it doesn't look like, it looks like sort of near the highest in a lot of them. There's a lot of sand instead of almost none.
What I see is the consultants constructing their designed beach profiles based on, on historical low beach profiles that were surveyed by the county. They will take those and if they don't have any other information, like I know that bedrock is so deep and that's as far as the beach is going to go, how far it's going to scour or a cobble zone, they'll, they'll, you know, if they're in a very sandy area, they'll, they'll take that design or that, that, that low beach profile that was surveyed by the county and they'll subtract four feet off of it. And that is considered the designed beach profile. And that is a tried and true approach that's been working for probably 30 years here or longer.
So when you review, you look for that?
Yes.
Okay. Now you mentioned storm surge. Is that an optional calculation or is it, or is it something that should be there?
It's kind of a debated topic. The, the scientific, scientific evidence says that the maximum storm surge that's ever been observed in Santa Monica or LA Harbor was eight inches. And it doesn't too often get over six inches. And so, you know, the, the eight inch was an extremely low probability event. Most consultants are using six inches of storm surge. So we see that in their analysis.
Okay. Now what about the maximum breaking wave? Is that, for example, in 83, we had a large storm with 30-foot waves. Does that get counted anywhere or?
It does.
It's just a break in nature?
It does. The, the, what these guys are modeling in their reports are, are extreme conditions with extreme base water levels. And then they're, they're running extreme waves in on them and coming up with, you know, a, a pretty significant breaking wave height. They're trying to model, I don't know if I could call it the, the worst worst-case scenario, but it's a pretty bad scenario. And all of that work has been designed around the experiences that they had in the 80s and, you know, in 83 and in 88, when there was so much damage along the coastline. So, so the methodology that's being employed is in direct response to those past events.
So you showed us a picture of a house where it was breaking on the deck, basically.
Yes.
If that house were to be rebuilt today, would that be evidence that that's your level or are you just doing mathematically?
Well, I think that, I mean, the way we read these reports, all the guys that are preparing the reports are very experienced. They've been doing it for 30, 40, 50 years. David Weiss has been doing it for 50 years. We, we see a combination of calculations and, you know, empirical evidence. And so what we see is that we see they're making recommendations that are based on both of those things. So I, I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay. And then the other thing I get concerned about is lately, we've seen almost every house that comes to us on the beach have a level first floor. And it seems to be that the calculations always make the street level the same as the wave uprush bottom beam. How much leeway is there in that? You say, you have to have 18 inches. If somebody comes in and says, well, I'm giving it some leeway, making it five feet, so my floor's level, is that scientific and do you review for that?
Boy, I don't know if I...
Our building codes are different than our wave uprush codes is what I'm saying.
Yeah. I, I don't know if I, I don't know if I've actually seen those circumstances occur. What, what I do see is, is the consultants calculating wave uprush. I, I've, you know, I see a lot of reports where it's, it's well onto PCH down in, you know, Carbon Beach area, the, the east end of town where the beaches are narrower. I, I see the, the, the designed scour profile is starting to eat into Pacific Coast Highway, which Caltrans ought to be worried about. So I, I can't speak to the, the coincidence of, you know, these, these floor levels all looking like they're right at the road level. I think we're going to see them getting higher.
Well, that was my next question. If, if we do see something like in East Malibu, there's areas where the, the FEMA goes all the way across the highway. So I guess we give variances so they can get down to the highway, the houses. At what point do we start having houses like the east coast where you're on stilts?
I started asking my...
I mean, it's real close, I mean, it seems like if we're giving variances, they already should be.
Yeah.
Is that coming?
I think it is. I don't know if it's going to be in our lifetime, but I started asking myself that question as soon as I saw the new FEMA maps because those base flood elevations, like places like the Colony are really high. And, and, you know, I see a scenario where you're going to have to go build, you know, say there's going to be a new house built there. That, that house is going to have to be up on stilts with parking underneath and you're going to be able to see through to the beach. It'll improve the view corridor, but it...
For some reason, we never seem to get those. So if the FEMA map shows that, say the Colony's five feet underwater, then theoretically, those houses should be at least five feet above ground, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And we, and if we can't give a variance for that because it's, it's not a separate tank, it's a, it's a house.
Yeah. And you've got a seawall along that entire, that entire area. I could see a scenario someday where that wall has to be raised. And I, and I wonder about in an individual property, somebody comes in and wants to tear down and rebuild and they're, they're held to the new FEMA map and you've got a row of houses and then you've got one that sticks way up in the air. This is, this is where it's going. I feel.
Okay, I've got a couple. A lot have been covered already. First though, I, I know we, we had a project which came across, across the desk here on Lattigo Shore where it was zoned, I think R2 or R5. I just want to, if, if somebody can kind of clarify, I mean, it seems logical, but just when do these kind of studies kick in? By definition, by the construction at the height of the water, how it's zoned, you know, just maybe if we could touch on that briefly?
There, I think there's two different things that you're thinking about. One is the zoning and whether we apply beachfront development standards or non-beachfront development standards. And that is tied to the zoning. As far as wave uprush studies and whether those are required or not, that depends entirely on whether the part of, whether the development is subject to wave action.
Okay, so we could...
I mean, there may, and then possibly not even the development, but if, for example, a bluff face is subject to wave action and the house is going to be, you know, potentially affected by bluff instability, then there would be a wave uprush study that addresses that.
That's happening more and more. I see scenarios where if we have to consider a certain amount of sea level rise, I, I did a review where I asked a consultant to, to consider the amount of, it was, this was actually a project for a, for an emergency soldier pile wall to support a residence out on Point Doom. And we asked the consultants to estimate how much bluff erosion was going to happen and then consider designing their piles for that across a 100-year period. And, you know, so we're going to be requiring those reports more and more often in dealing with, I think, bluff retreat cases.
Okay. So we more and more may have these kind of mixed cases where it's not zoned beachfront, but it's going to have these aspects of wave uprush study, et cetera.
Yeah, really, really the zoning is just related to things like setbacks and, and building height and stuff like that. But in terms of where the finished floor elevation and those sorts of things should be set, that's entirely the wave uprush and whether it's on the beach or not.
And then, and another one, I mean, it's obvious, we, we're all kind of talking about the projections where we could be, I, I'd say, it's safe to say that it would be difficult for us to guess what be, what would be the right distance to rebuild that from those photos you showed, you know, like what if the surge had been another foot and a half or whatever, or I should say the tide had been a foot and a half higher, that place would be gone, you know, blah, blah, blah. So should we be adding something in our conditions if they aren't there already, saying something effective, you know, you're building in a risky zone, you know, something like that? Is there something that explicitly says that or how are we covered?
There, for a number of different hazards that are in the Malibu area, whether it's wildfire, high wildfire hazard or slope instability or properties that are subject to wave action, there are, there is a requirement for people to, to record a, an acknowledgement of the, the risks associated with the place they're developing. And that's a typical condition that the coastal engineering review sheets have.
Great. And then a last one, more of a, kind of a curiosity, a general question. You mentioned before how we've kind of shut off a lot of our, the natural action to add to our beaches. Seeing all of this flow that's coming off the hills right now from the burn and everything, it's all, you know, black, brown, ugly looking stuff. Does that mostly change into sand as it gets kind of processed through the ocean or just for an educational kind of statement on that one?
Well, I, the black, brown stuff that you see, you know, if you're coming down the highway or way up on the hill and you see that stuff that's in suspension, that's all really fine-grained material. It's all silt and clay. So that's not even beach sand.
So it's just going to wash away, it's just lost soil?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that was it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
You guys have a really interesting job and one that if you fall asleep, you're, you're going to be lost because the stuff is changing so fast. So thank you very, very much. This has been very educational, I think. Guys, we learned something. So I appreciate it. Thank you and keep doing the good work. It sounds like you're going to be busy for a long time.
Yeah. Facing a lot of issues.
Thank you.
Okay. We had a speaker slip. Norm, you still interested in speaking?
Good evening, planning commissioners, Norm Haney. There were a couple of things that were mentioned and one, one of the things that was not mentioned is when politics get involved with science. Now, I, I'm not sure exactly why FEMA came up with the methodology that they use for determining the lowest safe floor. But, but we have one of the best coastal engineering people here, Reg Brown. He's been doing it for 30 years. And he's advised me that one of the reasons that the high level, such as the Colony of the safe floor, is based upon when the wave crashes onto the seawall, water rises up, splashes up, right? And they measure the height. It's all theoretical, but they measure the height of how far the water goes up. And that is not a test of the highest breaking wave. That's nonsense. And in the past, when we've had to design for that, we simply design a structure that can handle that. It's different from this. And it's simply bad science. There's just no question about it. And I think that it's based upon insurance and what they have to pay for. The problem is that unless, unless you're consistent with FEMA, you're going to have a very hard time getting a loan. And that's the issue. It's not the $250,000 maximum that you're going to go after FEMA for if your house washes away. That's, it's relatively small. The other thing, and, and, and bottom line is, I believe that FEMA is based on bad science. The other thing, and- and- and bottom line is, I believe that FEMA is based on bad science, and I- I don't know why. I mean, we- we've all seen where they had a line on one side, the highest safe elevation is above thirteen. On the other side, it's eighteen. And you can be two feet apart. Well, we know that's wrong. It doesn't take a mental giant to figure out that that is not true. There has to be an even transition. So, anywhere where there is a seawall, you will find FEMA's elevations are very high. Anyplace where there's not a seawall, you'll find that they're very low. Moving on, in nineteen seventy, during the seventy-one earthquake, uh, which I'm sure we all remember, uh, the stats that I have been told is that through tectonic movement, the Santa Monica Mountains moved up between ten and twelve inches overnight. Done. That takes care of the seven inches that we're talking about now. I just think, I- I'm not sure why the scientists have left out, they've estimated everything else. Why have they not estimated tectonic movement? They- they do have a history of it. They can make an- an analysis. And I wonder if it's not because the Coastal Commission really doesn't want any more houses to be built on the beach. And some- somehow, the politics have gotten involved in the science, and that really is infuriating.
Thanks, Norm.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Norm.
Real quick comment. We're lucky we're in California because in Hawaii, they no longer allow seawalls, and they measure the state's property on the highest wave, the highest tide that ever happened. So, if you're sitting on the beach and a wave washes over you in your front yard, it now belongs to the state. So, uh, we're pretty loose compared to them.
Thanks, John. Let's get back to the agenda. Our next item was written in oral communication from the public. Do we have any speaker slips? Hopefully, somebody named Noah is gonna come up and tell us how to deal with rain. It was a joke, John, a very good one. Spencer Regan.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Spencer Regan, and I'm here representing the Cornucopia Foundation Malibu Farmers Market, established in two thousand. We've been running the Malibu Farmers Market in the same location going on twenty years now. Because of the recent construction with the Santa Monica Community College, we had to alter the layout of the market, and in order for the Malibu Farmers Market to function properly, it needed to be moved as a unit, now leaving us with no parking. We are coming to the city of Malibu to request the use of the old Chili Cookoff site, which was recently purchased by the city of Malibu. We are requesting that the city grant us a temporary use permit until we can receive a conditional use permit once the construction of the college is complete. If the city does not assist our parking issue, it'll run our market out of business. This issue needs to be taken care of immediately, and we were wondering if this could be resolved by our next market opening this Sunday. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Just the parking, that's the only issue.
Okay, just the parking, gotcha. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner comments? Jeff? Oh, go ahead, no, I'm sorry. Just-
This goes in the category of irony, I guess. There was an application that came before us in January of two thousand sixteen. John, you'll remember it. It was an application, the county wanted to redo the- the water tank on Bush Drive. And there was a gentleman who- who submitted a letter at that time. He lived across the street from the- from the tank. And I'm just gonna read portions of it. Said, "The proposed new water tank on Bush Drive should be rejected because it doesn't include a backup generator, which is necessary when there is a wildfire. I'm a mechanical engineer and have lived across the street from the proposed new tank for more than forty years. During that time, I've been through three wildfires, which have burned up to my backyard. Each time, there was no water because there was no electricity." It's simple, no electricity, no pump, no water into the tank, no water out of the tank. District Twenty-Nine's position is that the standby generator isn't necessary because they have standby generators on trailers. That doesn't work because the last three times, it hasn't worked. The fire takes thirty minutes to go from Zuma Ridge to Malibu Park. District Twenty-Nine can't find a crew, drive to the generator, hook it up to a truck, drive up PCH in a fire, position the generator in the yard, and hook it up to the tank in less than an hour. Whereas standby, a built-in standby generators turn on in seconds. As it happened, you remember there was a debate about the- the increase in size that they were talking about and about effect on the water table, and- and there was a gentleman who came from District Twenty-Nine, who was their- their engineer, their chief engineer, I believe, who testified about how it really wasn't necessary to have a standby generator because in the event of an emergency, they would hook up a temporary generator and get it up to the- to the tank. I guess the fourth fire got his house. And I- I'm not saying that this is a criticism of planning or of us or of anybody. I'm not even sure we had the power to require the standby generator as a- as a condition since it didn't really relate to what they were trying to do. In the event, we continued the matter to a- a date in April, and when that date came up, it was continued to a date uncertain. And I went up and looked at the tank, and it's still, um, the same tank that was there before, so they- they never completed the project. Bonnie tells me when I talk to her about it that, um, that they're planning on- on bringing that back up again, and- and I do hope that the engineer who testified about the standby or about the temporary generators will come and testify again in front of us. But it's really, it's not the planning commission's job, it's not the planning department's job to do that, it's LA County's job to make sure that those- those things have those generators. And- and this is really the fourth time it's happened. It happens the same way every time, and I don't know how many times we have to get hit over the head with the fact that the county's just not gonna help us out on this. Hopefully, this time, they'll change their mind, I don't know.
Jeff, I- I think you're right, and I think what we've- we've gotta do maybe as a planning commission is recognize this is twenty nineteen, right? And, you know, generators and all those things are all common tools that we've got in place right now, and maybe we've just gotta be a little more aggressive. We look at some of these things to say, we- we wanna have this in there. So, just- hopefully, we can get smarter as we do this.
I have a couple of quick comments, but following on that, a couple of us in Big Rock met with Dave Reidman from Waterworks last week about this exact issue, but in the Big Rock context. And people there are thinking, well, maybe we could somehow contribute to the cause. And in that instance, Waterworks is very amenable to saying, if you guys wanna help pay for the generators and make sure you've got the easements to cite them properly and all that, they're saying, we'll- we'll ta- we'll do the last mile and do the maintenance on them and the servicing and basically manage it. So, there may be, on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, there may be a way to kind of pitch in with them and coordinate with them on costs. He also mentioned that there are FEMA grants. I forget the exact title, but it's basically an emergency preparedness sort of grant that that would maybe pay for the community's portion of that cost on that. So, there might be some- some movement on that front, we'll see. Just a couple minor things on- on, I, maybe I said this last time, but some of the documentation had really small thumbnail images of pages, and- and I'd like to see those bigger in the packet. And sort of similarly, I noticed that on architectural drawings, we don't get any sort of three-D views of anything, and I understand that- that if- if you have a nice render that has, you know, furnishings and surface textures, that that could be viewed as distracting, but it would be nice to be able to get at least like wireframe three-D models to be able to look at view blockages and understand how spaces relate to each other better. So, that's just a- a comment about what we get in the packet, and I don't know if that's prohibited, or if there are any guidelines on that.
It's not prohibited. It is something that the planners generally ask the applicants for because it is a lot easier for people to, you know, get a visual idea of what a project's gonna look like. And I'll- I'll remind everybody to continue to do that. I think most people these days seem to have those kinds of renderings, and some of them, you know, as we've all seen, are pretty sophisticated, so we should be able to get those.
Okay.
Uh, just a comment to Craig. We still do have at least one architect who hand draws everything. So, uh, now, on the- on the water tank, first, it doesn't do you any good to have a generator if you can't turn it on, okay? And somebody has to be there to turn it on, or you have an automatic system, and to do that, I mean, it's- it's a lot more complicated than people think. You need an ultra-capacitor backup power source because now SCE is talking about turning off the power before the fire gets there, okay? So, you have water, you may not be able to use it unless you really plan. Now, Jeff mentioned that meeting, and- and we got some criticism in the quote press about turning down that water tank, and we didn't turn it down. As Jeff said, we continued it. And part of this goes to the applicant. In that case, they could not tell us where they were gonna put the septic field, as I remember. They didn't even know, and they were asking for one. So, we said, hey, come by back with some real plans, didn't bother. So, um, planning actually did try on Bush to get that- that tank done. It's a failure of District Twenty-Nine. As far as the Farmers Market goes, I think this is serious. When they- when they-
I can address that, actually. I'm- I'm not sure where your comments are going, but I did wanna respond to, um, Mr., I forgot his name. Reagan? Reagan? You may have left. Did you wanna go ahead or-
Oh, no, go ahead and comment, 'cause they'll watch it on TV.
Okay. Excuse me. Some time ago, a couple months, I feel like, ago, the Farmers Market wrote to me and other officials of the city about this question, and I responded in detail indicating that it's entirely up to the city council whether and how that property, the Ioki or Sycamore Village, whatever you wanna call it, property gets used, and recommended that they approach the city council specifically and- and get that blessing before we talk about anything else because, you know, the planning department, the planning commission can't speak for how that property gets used. So, that communication was sent at least a month ago. I feel like it might have even been before the fire, but it's kind of a blur these last couple months. But we have communicated that to them, and so that would be their first step is to get in front of the city council and ask.
Do we know they didn't? Oh, standing in front of them?
Yeah, they need to ask the city council whether they'd be willing to use the property in that way.
Well, okay, to their defense, I've stood in front of the city council for six meetings in a row, asking for them to consider short-term rentals and never got a peep, okay? So, that doesn't necessarily solve the problem, but-
Well, the council's the only body that can- can decide that.
Except, we're sitting in a situation where they have a CDP, CUP. And when we gave that CUP, one of the conditions on that CUP is that the- the Santa Monica School District and the county had to find a location for the homeless shelter, homeless, I mean, not homeless, uh, work, labor exchange.
Labor exchange.
Right, yeah. The county and the college have been working with the Farmers Market and with the labor exchange to accommodate everybody.
They put in a provision, we put in a condition, that their CUP was no good unless they recited the labor exchange. I asked to put in a condition, same thing on the Farmers Market, provide them parking. And the county official, Sheila Kuehl's assistant, jumped up and said, "Don't do that. What's taken care of, they're guaranteed." Okay? She lied, okay? And now, they have a problem, and we will lose our Farmers Market if they don't have any place to park. I mean, it's literally true. So, we have a CUP that's not being followed. So, it's not just the city council. Somebody has to attach the, attack this situation because- because of the county, it's- it's a complicated situation, but because of the county refusing to get that provision put in our CUP, uh, we can't hold the school district to the- feet to the fire or the college district. But the city, by doing that, failed to protect our Farmers Market. And Farmers Market is something that's been in Malibu for a long time, and, uh-
What do you recommend, Jeff?
I recommend that the staff get the city council to- to answer the question. Or we reconsider everybody's CUP down there, including the college.
Well, I mean, regardless of what the- the planning department or the planning commission may want to do with the CUP for the Farmers Market, it's ultimately the- the question of whether city property can be used is- is gonna be up to the council. And then, secondarily, the- the issues between the Farmers Market and the county have to be worked out, too, just in terms of leases and licenses and all- all of those sorts of things. So, there's- there's definitely a role for the city to cooperate, but there are a lot of other things, as you mentioned, it's complicated. So, I think some of those other things need to be addressed before-
Should the Farmers Market put in a request for a temporary use permit? And should they put in a request for a- a CUP that includes, we know parking's legal on there 'cause we- we did it for ten years with the Chili Cookoff.
It's not an issue of whether the use is allowed, it's an issue of whether the city council wants to commit every Sunday to accommodating parking there, which could interfere with other things, for example, the Chili Cookoff. So, it's, that's what the-
Well, that's their decision, I understand that.
That needs to get before the council.
But if the city council doesn't answer the Farmers Market, can they put in a- a CUP and have them vote on it?
Well, I mean, they can- they can apply for anything, but they have to have permission from the property owner in order to get a complete application. And we can't- we can't process an application for something on somebody else's property unless the owner has given permission.
Okay, but, well, my- my, I'm just trying to get it moving along. We have, the city has allowed use of that property without any TUPs or CUPs. For example, uh, in the emergency, they had five hundred electric trucks there, whatever.
The first stop is the city council.
Well, they never voted on that.
That was, I think it was, uh, that was during the emergency, so the city manager had emergency abilities to-
Jeff, let me suggest, I mean, my- my suspicion is, because this gentleman came to us this evening, they have not gone in front of the city council yet. I'm gonna admit what he's-
They haven't gone in front of, they haven't been in front of the city council.
Right, so my suggestion is, and I think we gotta, is get ahold of Deborah and tell Deborah that the path she's gotta follow is the one that go, and if Deborah's smart, what she's gonna do is the same thing she did when she got the original permit for the Chili, for the Farmers Market, is bring the residents in who think this is a very valuable component of our community, have them do that presentation to the city council and make some noise there. That's where it's gonna get done. I mean, I don't know what we can do, unless somebody's got some magic here, I'm not sure what we- we can do here to move it along.
Have the city manager declare a marketing emergency. There you go.
Well, I know one thing, I will never again let the county lie to me.
Kate?
All right.
Questions?
Yes, I agree first with the- the fully rendered PDF, you know, whatever we can do to improve the quality of those docs. I only work with the digital version, so that quality helps me out, so appreciate that. And will we get an update kind of from, I know Richard's not here, oh, no, there he is, oh, good, okay. So, I'm guessing we'll get an update from him, and that was all I had.
Okay, I got just two quick ones, and maybe Richard can do this, you know, the- the fire department on the, you know, the size of the driveways and where do we stand with, do we know, you know, where- where do we stand with that thing?
That's, Craig George is here also. He was going, I asked him to be here tonight because there were some questions about debris removal that are specifically the, something that his department is handling. He, I think, can also speak to some of the issues with the fire department. But basically, the city manager's been working very closely with Sheila Kuehl's office and Chief Osby to try to push for some more conclusive guidance for property owners on that issue. It hasn't happened yet, but there are steps in that direction. I think Craig can talk about, oh, there he is.
Somebody- somebody talked about they were gonna look at the- the properties and just, and what are they gonna decide? Do we know what they're looking for, or what they're looking at?
Yes. So, if I can, at the direction of REVA and then with the meeting with Chief Osby, he delegated Chief John Todd to represent the cit- or to work on behalf of the fire department with the city. I have a meeting scheduled with him at ten o'clock on Wednesday, and we're gonna go over a lot of this stuff. They also have a direction by Chief Osby and- and other people- I also have a direction by, uh, Chief Osby and, and other people at the FEMA and stuff, that they're supposed to staff a fire department member here at City Hall to be able to answer these questions of what the fire department's going to do. I'm also working with the county, they're doing an assess, a site assessment review based on GIS data. And they're trying to identify the attributes on each property that could create, uh, an issue with the fire department, such as you mentioned, the width of a driveway, the steepness of a driveway, uh, fire hydrants and fire turnarounds, all these issues. So these are all things we'll be discussing and working with the fire department and trying to get information of which time we'll report. We can report back to the Planning Commission if so desired, but we definitely will be reporting these things to city council.
So, so do, do we know the number of houses that are impacted? We have-
Well, that's what we're trying to determine by these, uh, site assessments because, you know, it, it's, there's, there's particular things, and I'm sure you're aware, on each property that may be a problem for access, whether it's the width of an easement, the width of a driveway, can they get the driveway to twenty feet or is it required retaining walls? These are all things we're going to be reviewing with the fire department and taking a look at.
So if somebody's trying to rebuild right now, we're just gonna tell them to sit tight till we get more information, really don't. Now, when the fire department does one of these reviews, is somebody from the city going out with them?
Uh, that's what we're gonna discuss, if they wanna go out, if they wanna use these GIS systems to be, basically look at. The county has a very powerful GIS where they can basically look at the width of a driveway and within a couple of inches determine what the width of that driveway is. That'll be a site attribute that the fire department can look at and say, well, it's sixteen feet, we want you to get at least eighteen feet. Um, everything from the fire department so far, and even Chief Osby said, everything's gonna be a case-by-case basis and a review of each. I don't know how in the world they're gonna handle four hundred and eighty some odd properties that have something to be reviewed, but that's the indication from fire department.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, and again, from, you know, one man's opinion from the outside looking in, we pay the fire department a ton of money every year. And you would think they would be nice enough to sit down with us and say, here's what we wanna do, what do you guys think? It, I mean, it just seemed, you know, if we can't get that kind of a relationship when stuff's not burning down, interesting, okay.
Can I follow on that since we have Craig here?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Um, at the, the Osby, uh, session last weekend, there were a couple people who, who were complaining that they didn't know whether they would be able to rebuild based on the things you're talking about now. And it seemed like they had some question about whether they would be opting in or opting out based on whether they could rebuild or not. And that wasn't clear to me and I, I don't know if you could, could you speak to, is there any reason why somebody would be, if they were deciding, trying to figure out whether they could rebuild or not, would that affect their decision to opt in or opt out of the debris removal now? It didn't, it didn't make sense to me, but maybe you have a different-
Well, yeah, I think the primary reason that people are choosing to opt out of the Cal Recycle program is they want to see if they can reuse their foundation to save cost. Um, so the opt-in program, they're gonna come in and they're gonna remove the foundation, uh, there's no questions asked. Uh, if they have piles or something, they will leave those. But basically, their theory and their strategy is to come in and remove all the fire debris, no matter what it is, and then basically scrape the lot, even remove three to six inches of soil to take any contamination, so it's done. Those people that wanna consider reusing their foundation have to really understand what that means and the effects of fire on a foundation. A lot of people do, a lot of people don't, but a lot of structural engineers I've been talking with are not forensic engineers, they're design engineers and they know how to design a foundation and engineer it so it meets the code. A lot of them don't understand the test methodology you have to do to actually ascertain whether the foundation is still viable. Um, there are test criteria, there's testing standards, we've given a lot of the engineers what those are, between a visual inspection, a non-destructive testing and destructive testing, coring the samples of the concrete. And if they can show and demonstrate that this, the foundation survived all of that, they can reuse it. But it's a, it's not so much onerous, but it's a risky proposition. Because if they decided to opt out, later do the testing and find out their foundation's not viable and had to be removed anyways, now that cost is gonna be incurred by them. So what we strongly recommend is anybody that has the ability, opt into the, the opt-in program for Cal Recycle, you can, you can literally stand in front of your property waving your arms the day they show up and say, I don't want you on my property, and they won't do it. So, opt in and then make a decision later after you're testing on your foundation if you wanna opt out and do a, a self-debris removal program.
Okay, okay, thank you. Second question, Bonnie, this, this may be above my pay grade if it is, you can tell me. But John has been going to the city council to talk about the short-term rentals and there are still people looking for places. And that was done with the city council, how long ago?
Almost a year.
How did they get on their agenda? Can you, we, what?
Any council member could ask to have it put on the agenda.
If they ask, where they, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, gotcha. Uh, and last comment is, uh, if you've been watching these Planning Commission meetings, you've seen that a, a number of our votes have been directed towards looking at large houses and the impact they have on some of the residential communities in the city. Uh, last week at the city council meeting, one of the large houses went up in front of the city council. And the, the answer we got from the city council was to go back and stay in our lane. Uh, they approved that large house, uh, so they sort of sent us a message that says that's, at least in the short term, the direction they're taking. So peoples, these large houses now go back to you, all right? Uh, this is gonna be coming in front of the city council, I think, in the next month or so. Uh, if you've got an opinion, think about it. And if you don't want large houses, you should contact your local city council people, text them, tweet them, email them, voicemail them. Uh, but let them know what you think, because this is gonna be an issue that's gonna impact all of us. So Bonnie, up to you.
A comment? Are you answering that? Um, Craig, I just wanna make sure everybody is, I'm correct. The extension on opting in is February fifteenth, correct?
February seventeenth.
Seventeenth, so they haven't told February seventeenth.
Correct.
Richard's gonna cover some of those things.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're not in public comment? I mean, we're not in council comment yet? Oh, I wanna do another one. Um, in the interim, in the last six months or so, we changed pot laws in, in Malibu. And we have two CUPs out there that were not designed for those pot laws. So, when are those gonna come to us?
It's a very interesting question. Um, yes, in the middle of, uh, the, the fire recovery and all of that stuff, Measure G went into effect. And so, um, it is now legal for, um, a dispensary that has obtained a regulatory permit from the city. The regulatory permit is the new permit type that was created by Measure G. Um, then that, uh, dispensary can, um, deliver, uh, cannabis and can also sell adult-use cannabis. One of the dispensaries, the ninety-nine High Tide, um, has obtained their regulatory permit. And so, um, the interesting thing about Measure G is that it was, it specifically says that, um, the conditional use permit can be, and this is the odd part, administratively, um, changed by the planning director in order to accommodate the, the delivery and the adult use. So, that has occurred and, um, it's, it, it's just limited to those changes, so nothing else has changed. Um, the other dispensary has not come in for any regulatory permit, so at this time, there's just the one.
When you changed it, did you change the conditions, the CUP? Cause there's a lot of conditions in there they can't possibly follow, like two employees, they gotta have ten now.
The only conditions that were changed are related specifically to the delivery. And we're gonna be bringing that back just as a reporting item to the city councils so that they know, um, what's going on with that.
But if, if we have a CUP that doesn't follow the C, CUP, there's that, one of those properties was questionable, let's say, debatable on whether it had real parking, in fact, one space is six and a half feet I measured the other day. Um, are those all being changed? The fact that they need two employees, only can have two employees at a time, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
The scope of Measure G, or Measure G limits the scope of what can be changed under the CUP and it, it's, it's limited only to the delivery side of it. I don't know if Trevor wants to weigh in further on that.
Yeah, it, I, I believe that the language is allowed, um, the regulation's necessary to accommodate the adult use and delivery issues. The rest of the CUP would still remain in place, those types of conditions, uh, remain in place. If they wanna amend it to allow more employees, they could, otherwise they would be in violation if they do violate those conditions of their CUP.
And we have our annual inspection still going on. Okay. Uh, now, the other one is the perennial question, Nobu and Soho, how are they doing?
Um, the Soho Compliance Review, uh, we have scheduled coming up on February nineteenth here. And then Nobu, um, would be in, at a meeting in March. So, yes, those are coming up.
Thank you, John, Bonnie, back to you.
Okay, I just wanna mention a couple of things really quickly and then we'll actually get to our one and only agenda item after Richard does his, uh, fire update. Um, I wanted to remind everybody that the next Planning Commission meeting is on a Tuesday, February nineteenth. Um, the city observes President's Day on Monday, so, uh, Tuesday, February nineteenth is our next meeting. The Soho Compliance Review will be on that meeting. Um, another upcoming Planning Commission item of interest is the Malibu Beach Inn, uh, will be back before you on March the fourth. Um, let's see, a couple of city council items that, um, I wanna make sure people are aware of. The fire rebuild amendments that the Planning Commission looked at recently, those will be at the next city council meeting on, uh, this coming Monday, February eleventh. And then the neighborhood character, um, house square footage item, uh, will be coming to the city council on February twenty-fifth. And, let's see, I wanted to just quickly mention two other things, um, the MRCA projects that have, um, sequed documents currently circulating. One is the Escondido Connector Trail, the public review period for that runs through February eighteenth. So anybody who wants to, uh, submit written comments should submit those by February eighteenth. The Environmental Review Board looked at that last, uh, Tuesday. Um, and in order to give people some additional time, if anybody wanted to, um, submit comments, we, um, took comments at that meeting, the, the ERB made comments, and then we continued it to, um, February twelfth. Uh, and that's gonna be the next ERB meeting where we'll, the ERB will be looking at the other MRCA project, which is, um, beach access improvements in, in the La Chusa Beach area of Broad Beach, including a new restroom and, um, access stairways and parking and things like that. The comment period for that runs through February twenty-fourth. Uh, I think that is all of my comments, so I'll turn it over to Richard to give you a rundown on fire rebuild stuff, yes.
Is, is Sycamore Park access, is that in court, is that why nothing's happening?
Um, I'll let Trevor answer that.
What do you mean, nothing's happened?
Yeah, I guess that's my question too.
Yeah, as far as us and planning and all that kinda stuff.
I don't think they have any kinda complete application in, but yes, there is, there, there's multiple lawsuits going on there. And it was, the, there was supposed to be resolution in December about the access issues. And MRCA filed a cross complaint against the neighborhood, which delayed the trial date. And so, we're probably a year out from getting a resolution on that from the court.
So, you don't plan on any applications before a resolution, or you don't?
Well, we don't have anything before us to process right now. Okay, Richard?
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. What I have for you this evening is a quick update on where we are with our fire rebuilds. This graph here shows you in two colors, the lighter color being what's applied for and the darker what's granted. The top number there is temporary housing permits, followed by planning verifications. So those are in-kind replacements, uh, just to refresh everyone's memory. And then to date, we've got, uh, six APRs, those are ones where folks are adding something or changing something. Uh, six have been applied for and to date, one has been granted. A lot of those projects are still working their way through the various departments within the city to be deemed complete before planning is able to issue an approval. There was a question as well at the last Planning Commission meeting about what permits have been issued by the Environmental Safety Division. And this graphic here shows what those permits are. So for partially damaged structures, permits, uh, that have been received to do, um, repair work, there were seventeen of them. Uh, we've received questions about how many, uh, folks have opted in or opted out of the debris removal program. And that's what you see in the following statistics. Uh, for the local program, folks who have opted out, there have been, um, thirty-nine permits have been issued. For the opt-out program, there have been a hundred and five applications to date. For the Cal Recycle, uh, opt-in, there were a hundred and ninety-eight applications submitted for that. And then the next numbers you see there, that's in relationship to, uh, the, the structures that were damaged and destroyed. What we have here is we've been updating our information that we're giving to the public about what types of permits can be applied for in the various processes. Uh, so, up of the first item there is the in-kind replacement, that's called the planning verification. If you search the city's website or come to our counter, we have a handout for the planning verification process. And in that handout, it describes what conditions are gonna be placed on the project once it enters the plan check process, as well as what departments to speak to. We've also alerted folks on that application that they need to speak with the fire department too, to make certain that something doesn't need to be tweaked. And I know that, uh, so far, there has been some success there. Uh, one of the folks that we approved their planning verification a little over a week ago, uh, did meet with the fire department and it turned it out the house had to be shifted about two to three feet, so they had a five-foot walkway around the home. And we were able to accommodate that. The next or middle row there is the administrative plan review process for folks who are doing an in-kind replacement with, say, an increase in the height. They're adding ten percent because at this point in time, uh, since the amendments have not been processed through the city council, an increase of ten percent requires an administrative plan review. Uh, for that, we also have a checklist and a set of guidelines for folks. So, if, um, you were to search, the, the term would be administrative plan review checklist. That's on the city's website and we also have a copy of that checklist at our counters. On that checklist, uh, it shows all the information that's required. And it, it does briefly explain, uh, the process and what we are looking for. Uh, what's really important in that checklist, uh, for anyone who does take a look at it, is you're gonna see boxes that will be filled out by the various reviewing agencies. That's, for example, geology, uh, the city's public works department, the biologist, or environmental health. Uh, that checklist is gonna end up becoming, uh, for lack of a better term, your shopping list. But it tells us at the counter, as well as telling the applicant, what the other city agencies are gonna require. Uh, we can tell you at our counter all of the planning requirements, uh, but depending upon your site, there may be specifics, uh, related to geological issues or the wastewater treatment system. Oftentimes, it's as simple as a letter from the, uh, and project geologist or the wastewater, um, inspector that you have, uh, who most likely maintains your wastewater treatment system. Uh, but by going to those different reviewers in the city with that administrative plan review checklist, uh, they're gonna fill out what's needed and any associated fees. So it gives both the homeowners and staff guidelines as to what we're looking for when we review that project. It also will hopefully save some time because you've taken advantage of our reviewers' public counter hours and they've already kinda took a quick peek at the project and they tell you exactly what they need. And hopefully, you're able to meet that so that the first time they see the project, they can approve it in the review process. And the last line there, the bottom, that is when the property, uh, you wanna do something drastically different. Uh, say, a completely new structure or a larger structure, uh, that would go the route of a coastal development permit. Uh, that's also the route that will be taken should someone choose to add an accessory dwelling unit at this time. Uh, there's no way to exempt that from the local coastal program. So consistent with the new ADU rules, uh, you would process an administrative coastal development permit. Some upcoming dates to keep in mind, February fifteenth is the deadline for the debris removal, uh, opt-in or opt-out application submittal. Uh, FEMA and also the Small Business Administration, they've also extended their loan deadline to that period. Uh, so, no longer is it last week, but now it's gonna be the fifteenth. And then on March fifteenth is the deadline to complete fire debris removal, if it's gonna be completed through the local program. And I should say that it's important that folks comply with those deadlines uh, because it will not be as simple as just leaving your debris there and planning on cleaning it up at a later date. There will- There will be an abatement process. The details of that are still going through the city council. But the, the reason for that accelerated window of getting the debris cleared up, and Building and Safety can speak to this more, but it's not as simple as just hiring someone to come to your property and move this off your site. There's air quality monitoring that needs to take place, groundwater quality monitoring. All of that needs to be done during the cleanup process. In addition, the Cal OES crews that will be doing this cleanup have to start that early so that they can complete this and move up to Paradise. So there is definitely a window and there will be strict enforcement of that window because of both the availability of the crew to get it done and then also the environmental impacts of the cleanup that need to be monitored. I'm available for any questions, if there are any. Thank you.
Just two quick ones. Craig said that the deadline was the seventeenth. Fifteenth is correct.
Yes, we just confirmed that, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we're all same piece of sheet music. And in your, the chart that had the three different levels, once the city council signs off or the Coastal Commission signs off on the LCP amendments, what happens to that administrative site plan review box in, in the second level?
That scope of work there will, provided that whatever the addition, the addition that's proposed is below eighteen feet, that can then be a planning verification. If the addition requires a site plan review, then it would still, the site plan review for height or setbacks if something needs to be tweaked.
If they're tweaking something, but it-
Correct. Then that'll be the administrative plan review. So a lot, you'll be able to do a lot more now in the upper category.
One last question, and I, you know, the count, there's some four hundred and some odd fifty houses. You got about three hundred people who have opted in or opted out, I think, right, someplace? I mean, do we know where these other people, do we know how to contact these other people? And the only reason I ask, I was talking to one of the guys down there that does that and he said when they did Ventura, they had like a ninety percent acceptance rate.
Yeah, that's correct. In Ventura, about ninety percent of the people opted into the Cal recycle program. We've done, I, I believe, the best that we can possibly do. We've done reverse nine-one-ones, we've taken out ads in the paper, we've contacted everybody, we've done social media. Trevor had a good idea today and speaking to him about the abatement process of posting the properties that the deadline is approaching. We're going to look into doing that as well. So it is my view that we've done everything humanly possible to try and contact these people.
Opt them all in and let them opt out.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, it's just, they're crazy. I mean, you can't, you know, if they do nothing, it's, we got ourselves a bigger problem. I mean, you're, so, I mean, again, I wish, I wish I had an answer, but just-
If they do nothing, get, get on the, start a company that could clean up the ones that did not opt in or out. Because you can bill them anything you want. Question, Richard, when do the, we were told that there's going to be a whole set of outside planners coming in?
Yeah, the, at the last city council meeting, the agreements were approved for that. And so we expect to have new contract planners starting with us in early March, if not later this month.
Okay, so would this be semi-true? If you're smart, you come in and talk to the experienced planners before the new ones show up?
I'm just amazed that you guys do stuff that's not agendized.
It is agendized.
What?
This is agendized.
No, it isn't.
Yes, it is.
I've read the agenda.
You're out of order, Bonnie. Also, additional dwelling units, you can't approve because the city councils never approved them. So how are you going to do that?
The existing rules accommodate accessory dwelling units already. It's, it's a second unit. So while we haven't updated all of the regulations in terms of terminology and all that stuff, we were scheduled to bring that back to you in the fall and then the fire happened. And so that, along with some other things, you know, we just haven't caught back up yet. But it is possible for someone to process an ACDP for an accessory dwelling unit concurrently with their rebuild. And the state deadlines for processing that within a hundred and twenty days of a complete application are in effect, even though we haven't adopted the rules locally yet.
But it's my, I, I'm just trying to get the intricacies here. It's my understanding, the way the state rules are and the way our proposed rules are, is you can't have an accessory dwelling unit without a primary dwelling unit. And a lot of people have been asking-
It would just be used as a temporary dwelling unit until you make it, until you process your, your overall rebuild. Or if you want to live, if you end up delivering it permanently.
Well, in other words, temporary meaning no foundation.
Right.
Okay, because I get asked all the time, when, I just want to put it in a AUD or ADU and live in it. But they do have to not have a foundation, has to be temporary, correct? Or trailer or RV. And then, once we pass the rules, you have to have a, it can be concurrent, but you have to have a primary structure first, correct? Not first, or concurrent. So I'm just saying, if you want to avoid a CDP. Okay, that's it.
Jeff, do you have anything? You look like you were-
Yeah. Richard, could you put up the, the first chart you had, the, the people that have applied and people have been accepted and temporary housing permits? Yeah, there we go. So I've applied, I went down to planning, the process was pretty much as you described it. It was, you know, draw a map on our diagram and, and hand it in. And then I realized that what I'd done was basically made an application. I don't have a permit. I have, there's lots of other stuff I have to do in order to get the permit. And I've talked to Craig about it. One, I have to show that I'm going to be able to hook up to a, to an operating wastewater system. I have to show how I'm going to hook up to water and I have to show how I'm going to hook up to power. So I guess my question is, of those, those fifteen temporary housing permits that have been granted, that's granting by planning, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And, and are there any of those that have been approved through Building and Safety to the point where they can actually put a trailer on the property now?
There's been a limited number of applications that have come in and we're working with them to solve the issues of, just as you described. But we have not issued a permit and mostly because the debris hasn't been removed yet.
Right. But are there any that have been approved but for debris removal? Because I know debris removal is a precondition for all of this. But have, have any of them been actually given a permit subject to debris removal?
No.
Okay. And you mentioned, or when, one of our exchanges of emails, you mentioned that you're, Building and Safety is coming up with a brochure describing the process for, for getting through Building and Safety?
Yes, we're in the final edits of that and then I'll send it out for a test drive, so to speak.
Okay. I've been at this for, what, twenty-two years? I've been on a planning commission for twelve or so. And it's embarrassing in a way because we always sit here at the end of the process, at the end of the tube, seeing what comes out and I have very little understanding of the beginning of the process. And so it's going to be interesting for me to, to learn about it. But in that context, there was a guy who came in, oh, two years ago, or almost, a year and a half ago. And in explaining why he wanted an extension for his permit, he talked about the process. And I want to read just a little bit of it. Says, "When Building and Safety contacted me to let me know my plans were approved, I was elated, only to find out that was only for Building and Safety. Four other departments needed to approve the plans as well. Now I must pick up the approved plans from Building and Safety and submit them to the other departments, but not so fast. The actual approved stamped plans from Building and Safety must be submitted individually to those other departments and you have to wait for them to approve them individually before you can submit to another department. This requires for the plans to remain in the department for whatever their processing time is." Now, that's not the best part. If the department in which you submitted doesn't like something on the plans that were approved by the other departments, you will then need to resubmit the corrected plans back to the department that approved them for recheck and make sure nothing was changed from the originally approved plans. Or if the other department required changes, if they agree with that the department's changes, or do they want further changes? Now, this process has to happen with all the departments. If you're lucky enough to get through that process, then you need to submit one more time to planning for its final stamp of approval. Is that a fair description of, of the way the process works?
Unfortunately, yes. And that's something we've been working on. Before the fire, we were working with the various departments on an electronic plan checks the middle that would address that very issue. The fire came along. We were also looking at hiring a, IT was looking at hiring a contractor to come in and assess the city's IT system, including plan checking and all these other things, to make a recommendation of what that platform should be so that we're not having so many different platforms and security issues. I don't really honestly know what the status of that review is, but everything has been affected by the fire, I can tell you that. But we are working on exactly what you're talking about.
Well, that's, that's really encouraging. You know, I, from the very beginning, from the second election in, in the city, I can't think of one person that's run for the city council that hasn't run on, at least partially on the platform of, of, of permit streamlining. And, and maybe the fire will be the catalyst that actually gets it done. Thank you.
And I hope the IT guy, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, everybody that I've talked to, if you can sort of automate this whole process, you make your life a lot easier. But go ahead, John, one last one.
A real quick question. The next slide on the bottom, it shows people with fifty percent total structure damage, more than fifty percent. What's the difference between that and total structure? I mean, you still have to go through the same process, don't you?
You go through the same debris removal process, but in the places where it's fifty percent or less damage, people have to make a, an assessment as to whether they want to tear the entire structure down or they want to keep part of the structure and let it remain and then build back the part that burned down. And that's a complicated thing they need to discuss with their design professionals and engineers.
Okay. Richard, thank, Richard, Craig, thank you very much again. Richard, thank you for your, your work in that. I know it's not easy, but you're, we're making some progress. Let's move along to Agenda Item 5A. And this is an appeal for number eighteen zero zero eight, eighteen zero zero four, eighteen zero zero seven. Wireless communication facilities, number eighteen oh oh one, oh oh two, and oh oh three. Site plan reviews, number eighteen oh fourteen, eighteen oh twenty-nine, eighteen oh fifteen. Appeals of three separate applications, each for the installation of two new panel antennas and support equipment attached to the existing wood utility pole. We've got Ryan Embry. Well, we're first going to let the applicant or the appeal guy go first.
The applicant, yep.
You get fifteen minutes, right? Do we need, yeah, I almost forgot about you. Staff report would be great. Huh? You want what? We've got, request for a five-minute break. Go ahead, five minutes. If we could.
Yeah. As we all struggle our eyes from our seats.
Right.
Right.
I'm going to get Trevor. We'll bring the meeting back to order. Adrian, we'll start with you, then we'll have disclosures and then bring up the speakers. How's that? Play it honest, Adrian, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Earring and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you consists of three applications, which were previously approved by the Planning Director and were subsequently appealed by the applicant. These three applications are the first of eight applications that were submitted by the same applicant. And for simplicity purposes, we combined the three applications into one agenda report, and they were also combined in this presentation. So the very first facility is located at 30402.5 PCH, in the ocean side of the highway, immediately adjacent to the surface parking lot for Zuma Beach. The second facility is located at 25147.5 PCH, and it's inland, in the inland side of the highway, immediately adjacent to the Malibu Dock Hotel. And the third and last facility is located at 25627.5 PCH, inland side of the highway and just west of the Malibu Road and Pacific Coast intersection. Each of the three projects include two new antennas attached to an existing utility pole at heights ranging in 16 to 33 feet. All three sites include equipment attached to the pole. Staff approved the projects with a conditional approval to underground the support equipment in a new underground vault that would be placed within the public right-of-way. Since the projects, since the projects are very similar, and for the fir-, excuse me, the plans for, oh, excuse me, since, since the projects are very similar, and for purposes of saving time, plans for 30402.5 PCH will be depicted in my presentation while slides depicting the other two were placed at the end of this presentation and may be requested to be reviewed by the Planning Commission if requested. This site plan shows the site next to Zuma Beach. This elevation plan shows the crossarms holding the proposed antennas and support equipment, as well as other support equipment that's attached directly to the utility pole. The applicant provided three photo simulations showing the existing conditions of each of the sites. Again, these three photo simulations only show this particular site, but we have the other ones if you care to review them. This picture was taken from Pacific Coast Highway looking west. And here's another photo simulation. This one is looking south at the pole, and it shows again existing and existing conditions, as well as what it would look like if the proposed facility is approved. As proposed, again, the, the project is being conditioned for all the equipment to be placed in an underground vault. And this is the last photo simulation, and this one is looking east. The projects, the projects are required to comply with the local coastal program and Malibu municipal code, both of which require the undergrounding of support equipment when feasible or practicable, respectively. The applicant provided information about why undergrounding is not feasible or practicable. This information was reviewed by the city wireless communication facility consultant, who concluded the information provided by the appellant did not rule out that undergrounding the equipment is technically infeasible. However, the appellant raised practical considerations that may be weighed in by the Planning Commission for managing the installation of cell sites in the public right-of-way. The other, the other conditions that the appellant is objecting to is the regular quarterly maintenance inspection, as well as replacing, replacement of the existing pole with a streetlight pole should utility lines be underground in the future. These other conditions are directly or reasonably related to policies in the general plan or city regulations, and do not need to be removed. The appellant also asked for a condition to be added stating that any Caltrans requirements would control over any contrary city requirements. This, it's, the applicant didn't provide why this would be an issue on these particular facilities, and so we don't know what is the, why this is being requested. However, the city believes that it is more appropriate to address this issue on a case-by-case basis if and when these conflicts arises. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopts Planning Commission Resolution numbers 19-08, dash 09, and dash 10, determining the projects are categorically exempt from sequoia and approving all three proposed projects as condition.
Adrian, can you clarify those pictures you showed? Were those as the project has been approved or as proposed by the applicant?
So the photo simulations show the project as proposed by the applicant. So they show the equipment again mounted on the pole, whereas the condition would require tho-, that equipment to be placed in a new underground vault that will be placed adjacent to the pole.
Adrian, thank you very much. Any disclosures?
I had a talk with Chris Marks about it a bit, and I don't think we learned much, sort of confirmed what we, I think we each knew already.
What, what did you discuss?
Just the, some of the technical details of the application to see if we were understanding it correctly.
Okay. Was there any information you learned that was outside the report, outside the report or the materials presented?
I only mentioned that I have worked in a past life as an audio engineer, and I know something about impedance and signal flow and amplifiers and that kind of thing. And, and beyond that, I think that just necessarily informs my opinion to some extent.
It didn't, did it provide, did you learn anything that's not in the report that you ever rely on in making this decision?
I don't think so.
Okay. And as disclosed, we did discuss this just to kind of get some, I have a background in the same area, so we were talking a little bit about kind of some of the technical details. But basically, I have a degree in engineering, and so I have studied related topics. Our discussion, though, didn't really go beyond much, beyond what's in the, in the documents and didn't influence my decision. Okay. So you didn't talk about how you were deciding this matter, you were just talking about some of the questions about the materials that were presented before you? Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And I called Adrian and got a little background perspective, but didn't learn anything that really wasn't in the staff report, so.
Oh, I should say that too. I did speak to Adrian also.
Okay. So our first speaker is Mr. Zachary Musgrave, and you are with XD Industries.
That is correct. Good evening, Planning Commission. So as Adrian stated, one of the reasons why I'm here is to discuss the conditions of appeal and how we would like to, we're okay with the approval, we're not okay with the conditions. The main condition that we have a problem with, you know, we can concede the Caltrans requirement, but the vaulting of what the city labels as support equipment and what we refer to as ancillary equipment, essentially, as you can see, that was on the materials presented on the elevation plan and on the list of the equipment, the amount of equipment that goes in the pole is fairly small. It's not what we consider a macro facility, which is a large facility, freestanding tower, usually located on private property. They have lots of additional equipment, backup generators, things that require shelters, and they're just a lot more complicated. The idea behind small cells and the reason why they utilize the right-of-way is because of the type of infrastructure deployment. So the Verizon Wireless is considered by the California Public Utilities Commission as a, not necessarily a public utility, but as a telephone corporation. And under the CPUC, they are granted certain rights to utilize the public right-of-way, and the FCC also has essentially stated that, or using their declaratory rulings, that there are certain guidelines that need to be followed when reviewing small cell facilities. One of the first things I wanted to discuss are the technical infeasibility. As Adrian stated, you guys hired an outside consultant, is that correct? To review the infeasibility report. To briefly summarize what was submitted, which was an 18-page document for each site, basically outlining the process of vaulting two pieces of equipment, which, as you saw in the photo simulations, are fairly small boxes. I can provide the technical details if the Planning Commission desires. They all go on the pole, they're fairly small, and it's designed that way on purpose in order to be expediently approved through public works was the idea behind small cell infrastructure when it was first created. But going back to the vaulting analysis, one of the things that we discussed was the infeasibility. So vaulting would basically require the undergrounding of two pieces of equipment, two RRUs. Verizon has never vaulted small cell RRUs because they're not designed that way. Small cell equipment was never designed to be vaulted, and specific types of equipment are never decided, or were never designed to be vaulted. So RRUs, the radio remote units, were designed as open-air equipment, so they're not designed to be in an underground area. They use convection cooling in order to maintain temperature. Vaulting of the RRUs would essentially require us to, you know, utilize a construction, so we're going to have to get construction involved, we're going to have to purchase a vault, which we don't have vaults designed for small cells, we have vaults designed for macro facilities. So they're large, oversized, not used for small cells, it's not traditional. In addition, the, as, right now, as the site is proposed, we're under the 45 C now rating for community noise levels, so there's no noise at all. There's no cooling equipment on the pole, the, it essentially, it does make a certain amount of noise, but not beyond the ambient levels, they're considered non-noise generating. Placing them underground would require ventilation, fans for cooling, and also considering the location where we're at, and also the, obviously, the presentation earlier that the commission heard, sea levels are rising, vaulting the equipment near the beach, vaults are notorious for leaking. The, I don't know why they haven't designed better, but in Verizon Wireless's previous experiences, we try to avoid vaulting as much as possible due to the amount of maintenance that they require. In addition, obviously, PCH is a, there's not many ways in and out of the city of Malibu. During construction of the vault, we're going to be shutting down parts of the highway during installation, bringing in a crane. It's a lot more involved. The cost obviously goes exponentially higher because we are now doing something that we don't normally do. We ran the numbers to attempt to ascertain as to whether or not it was worth it for the sake of generating the report and giving it to the city, because one of our main bases for our argument and for the appeal was to, that it wasn't technically feasible. We outlined that, you know, the line loss of separating the RRUs from the antenna, which are designed to be near each other, requires that we use a different type of wiring, for a lack of a better technical term at the moment. We need to increase the diameter that we use in order to try to maintain the signal. So our current three-inch risers that go on the pole would be now increased to six-inch risers, and now you're going to have substantially larger risers on the outside of the pole, going all the way up from these proposed underground vault, which is also now, I'm assuming, would be aesthetically undesirable, which I'm assuming is one of the main reasons why the city of Malibu or the Planning Commission would want the RRUs to be undergrounded because of the visual aesthetics in the scenic corridor of PCH. Given that, I wanted to touch a little bit more in base about the new FCC declaratory ruling that came down September 27th, 2018. I'm not sure if the legal department has had a chance to review the declaratory ruling as it pertains directly to 5G deployment in cities. So as I stated earlier, the California Public Utilities Commission grants Verizon Wireless as a telephone corporation certain rights, such as the right to utilize the public right-of-way and to deploy infrastructure in the right-of-way. One of the things that isn't necessarily being complied with, if you want to call it that, is that, excuse me, one moment. Essentially, that when discussing infrastructure deployment in the right-of-way, the city must remain objective and not subjective. So essentially, utilizing aesthetics, saying that it's visually unpleasing when in the right-of-way currently, there are other infrastructure deployments directly adjacent to our proposed sites that are currently utilizing RRUs on the pole and aren't vaulted. And according to my research when I was driving up and on Malibu looking for vaulted small cell deployments, there are none. The FCC classifies out of character deployments as inapplicable. You can't essentially force one type of a, of a, an entity that's trying to install or place facilities in the right-of-way utilizing existing infrastructure, as noted, both of these poles are utilizing existing wood poles in the right-of-way, that it basically goes against the requirement of having an objective review process. So to say that RRUs, maybe, maybe they might be aesthetically unpleasing, they are required for the function of the small cell facility. I mean, in the same way that you wouldn't go to SE and tell them that transformer looks ugly, the transformers are not visually appealing, but they're required for the function of the site to bring secondary power to whatever facilities require it. In the same way, Verizon Wireless as a telephone corporation needs small cell deployment to increase capacity and coverage in these requested areas. They serve a function that serves the community, and not only the community during normal times, but also during times like the fire, during times of emergency. Capacity and coverage are paramount to making sure that communication lines don't become interrupted.
Zachary, could just hang on. Catherine, could you stop this time for, you can keep some time at the end for rebuttal if you want to do this.
Sure. Well, I did want to say that my time is basically coming to a close. I basically said all I wanted to say.
Okay, so you have some time.
Yeah, I have plenty of time. Also, one of the facilities that we are proposing after discussion with the SCE, they have changed their stance, it's for Malibu nine, they're wanting to utilize the pole for something else, so we're going to be withdrawing that application, so. The facilities are all essentially the same. There are two pieces of antenna, two remote radio units that go on the pole, we have PSUs that are hidden, usually attached to the RRUs, and then we have the conduits running down. And obviously, the, the city of Malibu wants to preserve the scenic corridor, so we removed the meter pedestal in favor of a wireless telecommunications rate which goes in the, a pole box adjacent to the proposed pole that we want to use. There's nothing really to vault. You're, you're talking about, you know, installing a, digging a nine-foot trench, 12 feet by 14 feet, for two pieces of, of, you know, RRUs that are this size. They go on the pole, that's the way they're designed, moving them away is going to cause problems with the power output. If we were to do that, the amount of line loss required would essentially make the facility not unusable, but extremely underpowered, at which point we would now, we would respond by requesting more applications, and we would be more sites all over Malibu. The more the merrier is the way we'd probably go because we have no other choice. I know that there are some discussions about the type of assets we use, because the wooden infrastructure or the wooden poles that we use, obviously, they're existing, but sometimes the cities, I'm sure, have received, in my experience, other type of asset requests or permission to use a different type of assets in favor of newer designs, as, for example, streetlights can utilize designs where everything is hidden inside. But due to new seismic regulations that we've discovered, essentially, many of the poles that we've previously had the ability to use are no longer structurally compliant when we place small cells on them. Essentially hamstringing us and forcing us into utilizing wooden poles instead of streetlight poles, because streetlight poles, we do have alternate designs. With wooden JPA poles, the most we can do usually is change the type of antenna, maybe we can modify the RRUs depending on the signal strength requirement, but at most, there's no ability to shroud. We can paint the, the equipment to match the pole, which we usually do at the request of the city. But beyond that, there's no other way to hide them. These aren't like mono pines where we can install trees and stuff, these are existing utility poles, we don't have the permission to do that kind of thing. We're limited by the Joint Pole Association of Southern California as to where we can place our equipment on the pole and what type of equipment they'll accept, including risers and things like that. So there are many type of different entities that we have to go through in order to get approval. We don't have a lot of leeway when it comes to stuff like that. In addition, I did want to touch on the appeal before, the second part of the, the appeal that Adrian had addressed in regards to the maintenance. The small cell facilities don't require maintenance. If, we have numbers that are displayed on the pole, within 48 hours, we'll have someone out there, if anyone was to call, the number is 24 hours, they can always be accessed. The people can talk to a person, and we, the way the small cells are designed, they have components in them that notify us if there's any sort of errors or anything like that. The maintenance is performed as required instead of on a quarterly basis.
You've got about three minutes left if you want to reserve anything.
Uh, nope. I am good to go.
Okay. You can keep going now or reserve three minutes for rebuttal, whatever.
We could use the three minutes for rebuttal. I'd like to hear from the Planning Commission on any sort of questions. Adrian, inform me that some of you had questions.
Okay, but well, if you're done, we'll save your three minutes for that.
I'm done.
The rebuttal is not to the Planning Commission's questions, that would be to any other speakers that are speaking here tonight.
Okay.
And we've got another speaker, Ryan. Ryan Embry, yes, come on.
Is this on? Okay. Well, I'm not speaking in any prior capacity to the city for telecommunications, but I was around in 1993 when the string of microcells were installed along Pacific Coast Highway, and so I'm a little curious as to why there need to be three new ones in the same area. When you used to be able to call and drive and talk the whole way, I used to have Verizon service for. When you used to be able to call and drive and talk the whole way, I used to have Verizon service for, um, traveling between Point Doom and down to this area and up, uh, eastward as well. And so the proliferation of more cells based on the power output of the antenna didn't really make sense to me in this equation, because there's an amplifier involved, which can affect the gain and you'll have the same result up on the pole, because I think the emissions, um, limit is set by the FCC and it's at the antenna. It's not how big of an amplifier you have. So I didn't, um, follow that, uh, argument, uh, that there would be any proliferation. And in fact, there's already a facility at the corner of Tranqus Canyon, um, road, at Pacific Coast Highway, that's in the right-of-way, similar to one of these. And so the proximity to the next one down serving, uh, Zuma Beach is fairly close. So I'm not sure there's much of a gap there. So I don't know where the whole application came from, if they're just redoing the whole string, picking some new poles, or if there are already existing, uh, facilities within this stretch of three poles, which looks to be several miles. And the other shoe to drop is what's with the remaining five applications? If, if these three or two of these, uh, get exempt from undergrounding, then I would see that as, um, par for the course for the rest. And so they submitted three five-hundred-dollar appeal fees, I'm correct? And then they have this inch-thick report tonight. So, uh, the guidelines, um, are pretty standard, I don't know if they're, um, they are the standards and you need to uphold the standards. If this was Orange County, it'd all be underground and we wouldn't be here talking about this. But, um, as it is, uh, I was told years ago that there were cooling fans and, uh, in the facilities above grade and that simply what's happening for you is to propose to move the radio gear from where it was previously applied partway up the pole, from the transmitter's antenna to now to consolidate it behind the antenna. It just adds the more bulk and weight to the, uh, higher up pole. That brings up the question of serviceability, if they need a bucket truck to check the radio gear now, that's gonna require a land closure permit from Caltrans. So there is an ongoing impact to Malibu people who are driving on the road, who are not gonna be able to drive down the road. And so there are, uh, a lot of issues here. The twenty-inch by eighteen-and-a-half-inch by seven-and-a-half-inch-deep, um, radio units would require two per pole. And I don't know if the commission would, chair would like to give me another minute, but I have three more points to make.
Thirty seconds.
There was undergrounding of the Harvester and Felory Heights facility that, uh, came before a prior commission and was appealed and, um, that was actually built. I think it may have burned down since then, but, um, that facility was, um, required to comply with the current standard of undergrounding the support equipment, whether it be a radio or an amplifier or a, or whatever you call it. Anything that's not the antenna.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, Zachary, you got a little under three minutes, or a little over three minutes, any comments you wanna wrap up with?
Sure. So, um, to discuss the comments from the gentleman here, um, obviously, a lot has changed since small cells were first implemented, the type of, uh, the amount of data we use has gone up exponentially. FourK requires a lot of different data streaming requirements, because there's a lot more data flowing. The more people that come to the city of Malibu and drive through, just as the population grows, will require more capacity. But the FCC does preclude Verizon Wireless from having to justify, uh, and reason, the reasoning why we are implementing, uh, cellphone sites in specific areas. Also, it also precludes, um, the council, I'm sorry, the commission from, um, uses, utilizing, uh, radio frequency, uh, information as a determination, as long as the facility is in compliance, which it is. Proof was provided to the, um, planning department along with, uh, the submittal. As far as maintenance goes, as we're utilizing infra, uh, existing infrastructure, a bucket truck or anything that would utilize or, or service any of the other entities on the pole, such as Frontier or SCE or Time Warner, that I believe are currently occupying the pole, I would have to verify the last entity there, Time Warner Cable. It would be no more affected than if they were to use, use, uh, perform maintenance on their poles as well. Lastly, let me see. As the, the gentleman stated before me, that there was an appeal for the undergrounding of equipment, which, um, the site ended up being built. I'm not sure if you stated that the RRU's were successfully undergrounded or not, but as, as far as I'm concerned, the site was built. And that doesn't discount the fact that there are no other small cell facilities in here. Other than that, I'm just trying to think if I have any final thoughts that I would like to address the commission with. Future deployments of small cells, obviously, that information is proprietary, we don't disclose. To just generally address, um, the concerns, not every small cell is Verizon. We don't know who owns, um, which, we only know who we currently have. And, um, obviously, preferably if we can, we, we do attempt co-location, uh, opportunities ahead of time, if it's possible, if it's in the area that requires the, um, coverage or capacity that we are pursuing. Beyond that, though, as I stated, it's, uh, proprietary information, Verizon Wireless usually doesn't like to, um, publicize that information or any sort of future plans on future deployments. And that's it, that's all I have, planning commission, thank you.
Zachary, thank you very much.
Adrian. Have, we've seen poles come to us before, but these didn't, correct? These were done administratively and then they appealed.
Yes, so most, most, um, applications that we receive for wireless communication facilities is to, uh, deploy, deploy them in the public right-of-way. And, uh, if they comply with the requirements, um, they can be approved administratively, so under a site plan review.
So the ones we heard were just because you wanted to come to us?
The, these, the ones you've heard before or these three that are?
The ones we heard before.
Those were for new, new poles too, these are, this is for just equipment mounted on an existing pole too.
Okay, um, now.
Save yourself, you could probably sit down.
Oh, sure.
If we got questions, we'll call you back up, just make yourself comfortable there for a moment or two.
Okay, um, has the city ever required these requirements of anybody else in any pole?
Have we ever required the undergrounding of this, uh, sort of equipment before?
Yeah, and, um, and guaranteeing they put up a light pole and, um, the third one was, um, the maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Have we ever done that?
The maintenance, it's been a standard condition that has been, uh, placed on all wireless communication facilities. The, um, the, um, have we required these, uh, these type of equipments to be underground before? We, we have required the undergrounding of, uh, equipment when, um, applications were being requested to be on the ocean side of PCH, when, uh, the equipment had the potential to, uh, block views. And we have required that, and then more recently, as, uh, Brian Embry mentioned, we had the Harvester Road, uh, application that through appeals, it went to the, uh, city council and it was approved to be underground. Similar equipment as this.
Now, we didn't see all the poles, but the one going down the hill to the Malibu seafood. What view blockage is there, it's all blue sky, isn't it, since it's going down a hill?
Uh, tha- that's correct, I think the, the only other point that, um, you know, staff wants to make regarding the undergrounding is that, um, there are new provisions about, about, uh, eligible facility requests. And, uh, that issue came up also with the last, uh, Harvester Road project and, uh, the commission may not remember, or some of the commissions are, uh, commission, uh, commission members are new. But, uh, what that is, is, um, the applicant, uh, would be able to do, um, increase in equipment or add antennas to their facility with, uh, very little discretion. And so, um, that is relatively new, it was, uh, legislation that was adopted in two thousand eleven. And so, um, what, uh, we wanna do, what we're doing with the, uh, undergrounding is we are, um, uh, making sure that the equipment is, uh, placed in a place that would be, uh, again, in an underground vault, so visually is better as well as provide the future expansion for any new equipment that may come down the pipe at a later time to also be placed in that underground vault.
Okay, and, um.
But ensure that the future equipment also wouldn't block views, right?
Correct.
But we know of no future equipment.
Excuse me?
We don't, we just theorize that someday there'll be some new equipment.
Um, it's very typical, uh, we see that on a lot of our applications, uh, when, um, you know, as new, um, um, as new data, uh, becomes or new, uh, technology becomes, uh, required for these, uh, facilities, they upgrade and they add new equipment.
Okay, um, but it's all, this is all theoretical, it's not.
Anyway, Adrian's pointing out is that currently the pole's not eligible for eligible facilities request upgrade, but once it has this type of equipment mounted on it, then it would allow, um, additional equipment to be added per the requirements of that, which are pretty minimal, so if, if you allow.
Okay, now, who owns the pole?
Uh, that would be Southern California Edison.
So why would we ask Verizon, who's putting a four-by-four box on it, to be responsible for replacing it with a streetlight? If, if the pole itself belongs to Southern California Edison?
It belongs to, uh, uh, Edison, however, what we're talking about is if in the case of undergrounding the utilities, that pole would have to remain erected in order to provide a place for the, um, antennas that are being proposed today to be, uh, to stay there and have a, you know.
I understand that.
So, um, Edison, i- it's the residents who actually pay for the undergrounding, uh, when there's, um, when, when there's a, um, uh, a request to underground, there's, um, usually a, um, an assessment district that takes place and then the residents, uh, actually, um, you know, pay for the undergrounding. And when that happens, it's, uh, the residents who would be responsible for, you know, um, you know, replacing or, you know, removing the pole.
In this case, out of two of them, I don't know about the third, it's county, the county property. Okay, so the assessment district would be the county. It's the beach. Now, but it's still, my question is, got a pole owned by Edison, it's got Time Warner and, and Frontier on it, maybe. And these guys come along and wanna put a, a cell unit on it, and you're saying they're the ones that have to replace the pole? If it gets taken down for undergrounding? What about the other entities, what about the guys who own it? What do they do, nothing?
Again, if there is an existing carrier on the pole, the pole has to stay there. And so what we're talking about is, uh, no one actually having the ability to be able to remove the pole if that condition, uh, is not placed on this project. However, the condition allows the pole to be, um, modified in a way that can, um, both be, uh, service the applicant in that it could still be used, uh, to, uh, attach their antennas as well as, uh, provide a light, uh, standard, which is, you know, uh, a, a use that's, you know, gonna be required after all the poles are removed.
Okay, I guess I didn't say it right. You've got at least four users of the pole, one of which actually owns it. And you're asking to require one of the users to replace the pole if it gets taken down? Why is that one user rather than Edison as a primary owner, or Time Warner, or whoever else is on that pole? Why are we sticking one person?
I think what Adrian is saying is that if all the other utilities are undergrounded, the only one that would still need to be above ground is this one. And so they would need to replace the pole with something acceptable, which, tell me if I'm saying it wrong.
That's correct.
It, uh, a light pole would be an alternative.
If, when we get to, what was it, six hundred million dollars to spend to re-underground Malibu?
There's a number of ways that undergrounding can occur, through assessment districts, or it could be citywide, or it could, you know, so it, we don't know.
Yeah, but my, here's my real question, why would you require them to do that, um, for a light standard? What happens if technology changes and they don't need to? Or if they do have to have a pole, of course, they're gonna have to put up a pole. But why, why, what happens if, say, for example, Time Warner does not wanna underground its cable? They say, we still want our cable on the pole, we don't wanna underground it. Time Warner gets off free and they have to pay? So I, I'm looking at a question of fairness here. These guys are adding, you know, one small portion of that pole and they're getting charged with the whole thing.
Only if they wanna maintain the pole in that location. And at this point, at this point, we don't have, would have the ability to make anyone else pay for it, there's no one else applying for an entitlement, they already have their entitlements here. So it's your, it's.
It's like, it's like if I'm parked, if I'm parked on the street and everybody else is driving on it free and you're gonna charge me to repave it, because they haven't signed up to repave it yet. It's, it, that doesn't make sense to me, okay, I'll go on. Now, Trevor, you've always told us that we're not supposed to use the general principles of the LIP, the MMC and the general plan. And then on staff, uh, uh, response to number three, that's exactly what they tell us to do. Should we, should we listen to staff on that?
In, in this case, I believe the actual finding is requiring these, uh, the determinations here. They also have the specific aesthetic, uh, requirements, which are required to be made by the site plan review, is that correct, Adrian?
I, I think what, uh, Commissioner Maston may, may be referring to is, uh, the response to, um, the appeal number three, which is, uh, in, and relates to this, this very issue we're talking about of undergrounding or if undergrounding wa- were to take place, um, then, uh, making it, uh, the responsibility of the applicant to, uh, replace that pole with a light pole and, you know, continue to use it, um, for their purpose. And, uh, the reason why, um, that, um, statement is placed there is because that's a specific, uh, general plan policy that speaks to, uh, this, this issue. And, uh, there are no development standards that cover, uh, the coordination between, uh, public utilities and cases of, uh, undergrounding utilities.
It says basically that the Malibu General Plan Land Use Policy two-point-two-point-six says, the city shall underground everything. Well, it also says you shouldn't have mansionization, are we supposed to follow that?
And just to be clear, on page nine of eleven?
On nine of eleven. The second paragraph, uh, staff response to basis number three. So that seems like.
The distinction is that, um, with respect to the mansionization thing, the mansionization policy is implemented in development standards in the municipal code, whereas this particular policy does not have any development standards that implemented. That's why there's nothing else to refer to other than.
Well, there's also, uh, specifically, finding number six says the project's consistent with the city's general plan, local coastal program, municipal code and city standards. There's a specific g- general plan finding required for the site plan review in this case.
Okay, so you're, you're making our argument, okay. Now, do we make, Adrian, do we make the Southern California Edison inspect the pole every, every quarter? They've got elect, uh, twenty, what, twenty-four thousand volts or something running through it, this is a little dinky radio?
I'm not sure what the requirements are for Edison, um, and again, it's our standard practice to include that condition for all wireless, uh, carriers. And typically, they do, uh, inspect their facility on a quarterly basis. Uh, and the reason for that is obviously twofold, is to ma- make sure that they're maintaining their facility, uh, in, in proper, uh, form as well as if in case the pole deteriorates, that they would be able to, um, uh, you know, notice, uh, any deterioration and hopefully replace the pole, um, before it becomes an issue.
But that would bring up my question, who owns the pole? And you tell me it's Southern California Edison, so they can't just go rip down a pole that they don't own, right? What do they have to do with the condition of the wood in the pole? Isn't that Southern California Edison's responsibility to calculate the load, what goes on it, blah, 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 blah? Not a radio transmitter mounted on it?
It's everyone's responsibility, as a matter of fact, um, we have discussed, uh, wind loading, uh, capacity requirements for the installation of wireless carriers at the, at, you know, uh, past planning commission meetings. It is the. It is the responsibility of whoever is attaching new equipment on the pole to be able to demonstrate that they will be in compliance with those requirements.
But isn't that the loading requirement?
Yes.
Okay, and this has nothing to do with loading. Once the weight's there, it's there, right? Okay, I'm just trying to understand why we, why we would require these things. Now, I still don't understand how feasible is the same thing as practical.
Practicable.
Practicable, yeah. One is, yeah, you can do it. The other is, you could do it if you have enough money. They're not the same thing. But we equate them as being the same thing in the staff report.
The definitions were quoted in the staff report and the definitions are very similar. So the, the two terms are change interchangeably, are used interchangeably, excuse me.
Okay, and I think this all comes down to one thing. Have we ever put these specific requirements on any other carrier?
I mentioned before, we have. And then more recently with Harvester Road, we, you know, that went to the planning, or planning commission and subsequently city council. It was conditioned to underground the equipment and that facility was very similar to the proposed facility.
But you proposed to us not to underground it.
Staff's recommendation was not to underground. City, city council with negotiation with the adjacent property owners negotiated that with the applicant and it was approved with an underground vault.
Are there any others?
There are a lot of other wireless carriers with underground equipment. They, again, it, we look at those on a case by case. But every wireless carrier that we've seen for new equipment on the ocean side of PCH would require it. On other projects that are not on the ocean side of PCH, we've looked at those on a case by case. And we have also required equipment for a large number of those applications as well.
Okay, and then the view blockage question. When we look at the picture of it, it's this little box inside of a telephone pole. The applicant brought up this, the point of a transformer. It looks a lot smaller than a transformer. Do we evaluate transformers when the electric company comes along and wants to put them up for view blockage?
Transformers are different than the applications before you today. The application that's before you today is subject to your review for aesthetics and safety. Whereas a transformer is not.
Because of state law or something or federal law?
Correct.
Okay.
Conceptually, it's, looks simple to me, but then I have some technical questions that may be mostly for Adrian, but maybe sometime, we'll see. I mean, I, I see first off that, that feasible and practicable are the same. And any confusion might be with practical, which implies convenience. So the question to me is, is it really practicable? And so my technical questions go to that because, you know, otherwise that's what the code says we have to do. So on the size of the vault, how big is the vault on Harvester? Is it, it sounds like it may be smaller than the one that they're saying they need here.
See, that vault is different in that there was a Sprint facility already there that had an underground vault. And so when Crown Castle was proposing their application, they were asked to come up with an agreement with Sprint so that they can replace the same bolt with a larger bolt and allow the two, the two carriers to put their equipment there. So it allows for the equipment of two applications into a vault. But I think even that vault would be smaller than the vault is described by the applicant that would be required for these three facilities.
So that leads to my next question. If they put this big vault, vault in there that seems by the spec much larger than it needs to be, even if you have a pump and the, so forth in there.
Correct.
Can, can multiple companies share that vault as we go down the road? When these other companies say, oh, we want to come down off the pole and we have to go underground. Are we building an extra space for those right now or what provision is there in that direction?
Maybe we can go to the next question while I look into that.
What about, is there a difference in the event of a power outage, disaster, fire, in terms of the backup, the electrical backup? Whether it's mounted on the pole versus whether it's in the vault and has the additional pump and air circulation equipment in the vault? Do we, do, is one substantially more difficult than the other in terms of keeping the system running when there's an outage?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Maybe the applicant, the appellant knows that? Come up to the microphone, please.
You were asking if it's a substantially more, or is it more difficult to maintain or?
No, what's the difference when there's a, a fire or a disaster of any sort or a power outage that, that says we don't have electricity there on site? What are the factors that, how, how do we distinguish the pole mounted version versus the version in the vault?
With a lack of electricity?
Yeah.
Both, both, both scenarios would result in the facility being, becoming offline. If anything, the facility, the undergrounding facility, if there's no sort of some pumps or anything keeping out, it might just damage the equipment beyond repair. Because due to, you know, the reason why some pumps exist, especially in locations like in the flood zone off of PCH is to keep the water out. They run continuously. They make noise. You know they're running. But if the electricity is out, then the vault will fill with water eventually.
Okay, okay. And you raised the point that this would get in Edison's way on the pole. Is there any finding to support that notion, Adrian? Does Edison care if this is up there or not?
Would Edison care if the new antennas are mounted?
Yeah, they, they raised the point that this would get in Edison's way.
Oh, you're referring to the, the withdrawal of the third application?
I'm referring to, I'm not sure where I saw it, but it said, but putting the extra equipment on the pole would make it more difficult for Edison to access their gear. And I, I didn't think that was true, but.
And where did that information come from? Was that?
Somewhere I read it. Yeah, keep going. Regarding the expected lifetime of the vaults and any sort of end of life scenario, these just live in the ground forever? Or I understand there's some code somewhere that says that vaults become obsolete by law within 15 years? Is that accurate? And what, what happens in the, in the end scenario, end, end game here for this stuff underground? Maybe you could speak to that while Adrian's.
In the case that if Verizon is currently maintaining a, a proposed facility or an active facility, we will actively maintain all compliance. And that is to include if there was a vault that was in the ground that, I'm not aware of this, this, this requirement after 15 years. I'm just not educated on the matter. But Verizon Wireless would be required to comply. And thus if it became obsolete, we would not leave obsolete, obsolete vault in the ground due to issues being raised legally. If any, like a contractor was injured or something like that were to happen. But also the sites are continuously reviewed because we'll be sued essentially if anything's out of compliance or is found to be out of compliance to include items on the pole as well.
What, what about, why again can you not put a hollow metal pole up that has all the gear installed inside it? Have you said that in a streetlight that there's some seismic issue? But it seems like you can build a solid metal pole that has enough capacity.
We can do a monopole freestanding. It's not out of the question, but utilizing other existing assets like streetlights. So on PCH, there are currently existing freestanding monopoles made up, I believe, of concrete. I've seen two of them adjacent to each other, mounted on the ground. There's no light standard on it. They're just concrete and they have a shroud on top.
You could mount this equipment inside a pole?
Not this specific equipment. There are type of remote radio units that are smaller in the dimensions.
I know a preamplifier can now be mounted in a microphone body, so it just seems like.
A different type of radio unit. A 2203, for example, is one that is being currently proposed inside a streetlight standard. That's a, it's a six foot canister that is attached to the top of the streetlight pole where the antennas and the RUs are all located inside of the asset.
So, I mean, it seems like it is practicable, it is feasible. It just seems like they're gonna do this and then in 10 years or less, the technology's gonna change and we're gonna be putting everything up on the poles in tiny little micro things. So we dig these big pits now for just this one purpose and I don't know.
May I address one specific comment regarding a future use of the pole? One of the, obviously commenting on things that haven't happened yet or might happen in the future, commenting on theoreticals is something that we were discussing earlier. There's currently no other space on the pole to utilize or co-location. There's just, due to compliance issues and to GO95 and SCE clearance requirements, we're barely fitting on the pole as is. So we've been working closely with SCE to do that. In the case of, and if SCE would like to underground, the Southern Joint Pole Association of Southern California has a existing agreement where we all have to, all the entities on the pole need to be notified if something like this were to happen. In that scenario, we would obviously, if we would like to desire the facility to remain, we would put our own pole, to be required to do that if we're not the ones, you know, to replace the pole with our own. It's not our responsibility. We're not the base owners. We don't even have permission to remove and replace the pole without SCE, without their approval. And ultimately, if they say no, we can't do anything. If we can't, if we ask to use the pole and they say no, we can't use it.
Is there room in the vault for the, for the other companies if you negotiated a agreement?
Where would the, technically, would there be room in the vault for other equipment? The answer is yes. But was there any room for any other entity to go on the pole? The answer is no. And whether or not that the entity would be willing to place it on a pole, maybe 30, 50 feet down and then run the lines all the way down to the vault, the facility wouldn't even work. I mean, at these extremes of the distance, the line loss, I'm sure technically speaking, you, Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Marks might be able to have a better understanding of it. But line loss, it just, it's not, it's not feasible.
I, I, okay, the line loss, I don't buy that argument, just based on impedance. It's, it's a incremental change in the width of the cabling you need, but the diameter. But, okay, last question, and this is maybe for you guys. Is there a way to distinguish legally or practicably this versus the Harvester case where we were dealing with private landowners and their view concerns? And maybe that's, did that drive the undergrounding in a way that it doesn't necessarily drive it here? So, I don't know.
Said, there was a negotiation with the, with the city, with the landowners.
I think the other issue is that as a policy matter, the city council expressed interest in having as much things undergrounded as possible just because of aesthetics.
All right, so first I have a question for you, Adrian. There was, Zachary pointed out an observation about similar towers that did not have vaulting. Any comments on that?
Yes, as mentioned before, there's, you know, there are other wireless carriers that have been allowed to install without undergrounding their equipment. And again, there's also a lot of them where we have required them to underground the equipment. So we have been inconsistent. However, we're, we're taking the lead from city council, as Bonnie mentioned, to, you know, take the, the policy that they put in place recently.
Okay, thank you. And then Zachary, I know that when Mr. Embry spoke, he made reference to if this were an OC. Are you aware of any other areas where you would just be vaulting everything?
I currently work with probably maybe 20 other cities and none of them have vaulting requirements, including Orange County.
Okay, all, all cities are okay.
Glondora, Covina, Monrovia, Anaheim, Santa Ana, none of them have vaulting requirements. And those are LA County and Orange County. It's just not a normal thing. I've never heard of the small cells being vaulted until essentially today successfully because the failure rate is so high.
Okay, then next up, as far as the vaulting, you stated before that you have kind of referenced your vaults based on, I think you called it a macro tower instead of a micro tower. So is there any reason you would go with that larger size? Could you propose a more appropriate vault to keep your costs down because you referenced that in your documents?
Verizon would have to essentially procure with a new vendor essentially, just like a different creator of the vaults and would have to go through the process of making sure that they're compliant with Verizon standards. And it would be possible probably to utilize a smaller vault if necessary.
Okay, and then during your presentation, you said the signal would be weakened. Again, you can make a thicker wire.
Which is something that I did say, Commissioner Hill, that if the diameter would be increased, it was resulting in increased riser sizes.
Right, these are my, those are my questions. So you don't have any proof of that loss of signal. So you would imply that you might need more towers?
I provided the planning department a statement from Verizon's radio frequency engineers discussing the line loss.
Was that provided to us, Adrian?
I believe that was part of the information that was provided by the applicant in their basis for the appeal.
Zachary, the write-up stated that if it's within 75 feet, you can get away with a thicker wire requiring a six, six inch riser. So the main question that wasn't answered in your write-up was if you can find locations within 25 feet of the base of the pole. That was the variable you left hanging. So are you confident you could find that?
With the increased diameter. There was with the ability for the site to function with the, with the increased diameter.
So you're confident you could find areas within 25 feet of the base of the poles to meet that requirement?
We provided a map in the vault analysis report showing where the, where the vault could go. It's currently in the right of way, the second year parking avenue off to the side of the site.
Okay, so in each case, you feel you could meet that minimum 75?
There is enough room, but installing a vault also brings into other questions. Both of these scenarios in Malibu one and Malibu eight, the first two sites are located in areas where people park regularly to access the beach. Both these sites would now require ballers on either side because the vault requires access 24/7.
Depending on the size of that box, could be a much smaller box, probably not nine by 11 where you started. Okay, so we may need ballards that could take up some space.
Ballers will be required.
Okay, then the other observations, just you stated that to get to a 75 foot reach, you need the six inch risers. Could your team or could a requirement be put on the applicant to say, go with a six inch diameter requirement up until the pole and then go with three inch riser? So we don't have the blight of a six inch wide riser. So I'd ask.
That, I'm not sure if that's possible. I would have to consult the radio engineers to see. Because ultimately, it's up to them to decide how far their equipment can be, where they have the whatever statistics they utilize to make their decisions off of.
Yeah, it would be a matter of can they do a join between the thicker wire and the thinner wire? So if you can get back, I, I think we'd want to put that as a requirement though, so we don't have this six inch risers because they're trading one blight for another. Then the other, just coming back, I don't know if, if Commissioner Hill's question was clear. When you look at a wooden pole, say it's a foot in diameter or so, and if you consider a metal pole hollow, that, you know, is the same rough diam, or same rough dimensions, could your equipment be placed inside that pole itself with some access or something?
The current equipment, no.
Okay, and now you made reference to new equipment, which was?
There are, there are a number of different type of remote radio units that exist in all different manners from different manufacturers. It's, it's possible to have RUs different size, but the output for the, the facility's strength is, requires more poles. So ours is what we consider high power, small cell facility.
Got it.
So the, the, the reason why the RUs are the size they are and the shape and the panel antennas are four feet is to meet the coverage and capacity requirements of that specific facility. If we were to utilize, for example, smaller ones, we would acquire now more facilities to make up for that lost coverage and capacity.
Okay, so there was an argument about if you had to go with that 75 foot run, you might lose power. It sounds like that's not the case. You probably could hit the power numbers. But if you went with smaller RUs, you'd lose power and then you'd need more.
You'd require more facilities. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is not directly related to your application, but you raised the point about emergency situations. And I, I take it that we're in agreement that when the power goes out, so does the cell service.
Correct.
Is there a system somewhere, because that's, that's what happens to us on a regular basis during the last fire. Nobody had any kind of cell service. Nobody could get in contact with anybody. People were screaming about where their families were and so forth. Is there some sort of a cellular system that, that has backup power attached to it?
Macro facilities usually have backup facilities. This is why they usually have shelters. So they have backup generators. They have additional equipment, ventilation for the equipment to keep everything cool. And everything is stored usually off the facility itself and adjacent to it. And those instances usually Verizon Wireless will essentially have the sites as emergency only. We won't be able to access it as consumers.
What does that mean?
That they keep lines open for communication for like sheriff's departments, police departments, fire departments, things like that.
And, and I don't want to interrupt, but, but I'll tell you what. I, I looked it up because I, I mean, one of the questions I had is why is there not backup when the electricity goes off? And apparently, as a result of the Hurricane Sandy and the Hurricane Katrina, those areas now have backup. And apparently, as a result of the Hurricane Sandy and the Hurricane Katrina, those areas now have backup.
I mean, it's possible that it could be a future requirement.
It's available.
Theoretical.
They're mad at us here.
As I stated, macro facilities do have backup generators, as small cell facilities don't, because they try to be as minimal footprint as possible. Where would a backup generator go in the public right-of-way besides in an underground vault? There's no place for it.
Backup generator, backup battery, I don't know.
There's, there's one right near the Bellar Bay Club, it's giant.
Okay.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
No, I, that's all I had, I'm just gonna suggest that nine forty-one, we've only got one item on the agenda, maybe a motion would be in order.
Good, you go ahead.
G five is coming, is this part of G five?
This is, all four G infrastructure currently is moddable to five G. We usually just replace the antennas or we change the RUs with five G compatible. But the five G deployment, technically, I'm sure the legal department can know that the order's already come down. The city needs to have ordinance and everything in compliance by early April.
Now, my, my question was, I always heard that five G requires more cell.
It will. The way the technology works is the signal doesn't propagate that far. It's extremely, what's the word I'm looking for? It's susceptible to interference. It needs to have a clear line of sight. It can't be painted, besides there's one type I think paint that can be used. It can't be shrouded anyway because the signal won't be able to get through. It's called millimeter wave, it's like the technical term for it.
So we're looking at more poles no matter what when five G comes along?
When five G comes along, we're just gonna be utilizing more, but the, the actual infrastructure themselves, the five G equipment, is usually smaller.
More, more poles or less coverage? Yeah, so.
The idea behind five G is that eventually everywhere we drive, we will have a handoff. We will work from one facility to the next as we drive. The capacity for that one will be individual, and as we drive, it'll be a seamless transition. So the idea, behind five G, yeah, you're right, thousands of sites in a city.
Of a continuance pending the design of a vault that has backup power inside it? That's what we want, right?
It doesn't do any good if it gets wet.
Okay, John, go ahead, ask your question.
If we required backup, whether, I don't know if we can or not, if we required a battery rather than a generator, four hours backup or whatever. Well, if you have a series, say you had fifty poles in a row, and you lost two of them in the middle for a vault flooding or something, does that shut off the cell service down the line?
If, well, you would, I guess temporarily lose service of the five G, but that's why we always have the redundancies with, for example, right now, we have four G LTE, four G, and then three G. Three G still is now active, it's the old technology, but it's still there. It exists in locations that don't have sufficient coverage, but usually it'll kick in if cell sites were to go down. There's usually existing coverage in other capacities.
All right, let me sort of summarize what I think I've heard. Basically, a lot of this undergrounding is coming as a result of direction from the city council, decisions they've made, all right? And their desire to try and keep the view as clear as it is. I was looking to understand, you know, you made an argument someplace that said if I, you know, if we do this, it's gonna reduce your coverage, you're gonna need more poles. There was no evidence of that in the report, and I think in your presentation, you said you don't have to do that or Verizon does want to provide that information.
The FCC doesn't require Verizon to require it.
Excuse me?
Verizon, or the FCC doesn't require Verizon to.
Right, but if I'm gonna understand that, you would like to have seen something in there that said that you actually got that.
Which we have provided in good faith, coverage maps and propagation maps with the site, even though we didn't have to comply.
Okay. The requirement, they currently have, you know, there's the requirement to check the pole every three months, and you say that there's other requirement, what is the, under your existing requirements, so assuming there's no other problem with the pole, how often would somebody go out there to look at it?
To make sure that the pole is active or working?
Yeah, inspecting the pole, make sure everything looks good.
If the pole wasn't working, it would, it would throw essentially.
Absent another, some problem going on, how often does your, does the government require you to look at a pole?
As required.
Doesn't, so this would be.
We don't have an existing requirement, it's quarterly, maintenance, annually.
Okay. Look, I mean, make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion to accept staff recommendation. I'd love to add a clause that says they gotta put backup in, but I don't think I can do that.
I don't think we have a basis unless you want to amend it.
Then I'll make, move staff recommendations.
Can we make a recommendation that the conduit running up the poles not be larger than three inches?
You can require it to be as small as, as necessary, sorry, as small as possible. You know, to, you're talking about limiting the aesthetic impact of what runs up the side of the pole?
Correct.
Here's what I think is gonna happen, I mean, if this becomes a requirement for Verizon to put up additional poles, they will go back and take a look at what they're using, right? I mean, they'll come up with smaller boxes, smaller, because they're, they're not stupid, they're gonna try and make this thing work as efficiently as they can for them. Our job is to say, here's what we want to have, their job is to figure out how to do that.
I, I, I sort of disagree with that. Our job is to get the best cell service we can get in Malibu because it sucks, okay? And if we're the.
Is there a second for Chair Earring's motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we'll go the opposite end. I personally believe the more cell service we have, the better. I think there's zero chance we're gonna underground Malibu for six hundred million dollars. And I cannot see why they are required to replace somebody else's pole when other people are using it. So, I would like to find, find in favor of them being able to put it on the pole, no vault, but require a battery backup and, and not have to deal with the Caltrans. Or they can have the Cal, we keep the Caltrans requirement.
I don't think we, there would be a basis for requiring a battery backup. We're limited to making a decision based on the aesthetic impacts of the project, unless they're willing to amend the project.
Why are we, why is it based on aesthetics?
That's, we have a very constrained ability to require changes to their projects. And the aesthetics is one of the few areas where a city.
Well, okay, my only comment on that is, I drove up here today and saw six red lights for me to cross the street to get up here, and that's aesthetics.
What's your motion?
My motion is, find for the plaintiffs, he does not have to put in a vault. Grant the appeal. He does not have to put in a vault. And, and he gives up the Caltrans.
So you've taken all the conditions out?
Except the Caltrans one.
The Caltrans was my, our own condition, which we conceded, we don't require that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, would that be to direct staff to return with a, with.
Resolution stating.
With a resolution memorializing, granting the appeal on those two issues? Which would be the, allowing, not requiring the underground vaulting and not requiring the maintenance.
Right.
Correct, because I believe that the reason for maintenance, and I just want to explain this, the reason for maintenance is it's SE's responsibility.
Got a second? So wait a second, okay?
Did you want to include in your motion the obligation to replace the pole if it's undergrounded or not? You didn't seem to.
I, no, I, I'm finding for them, it's not their pole, and there's four vendors on it.
That wasn't, that wasn't what Trevor mentioned as one of the grounds for.
Oh, okay, well, that should be Trevor.
Trevor?
Is that one of the. About replacing.
Now the conditions is the city gets priority over Caltrans.
I just want to make sure that the record's correct.
Yeah.
Do they challenge that?
Yes.
So the, the motion would then be to return with the resolution, memorializing, seeing a decision to grant the appeal and not require underground, an underground vault to allow it to be pole-mounted, and not requiring the replacement pole to be put in. If there's a future undergrounding of the other lines and.
No maintenance.
Not requiring the maintenance, the quarterly maintenance condition.
Correct.
Okay, I've got a second.
So.
Any second.
Yeah, we have a second on it, I just.
We'll renew my second, okay?
Thank you, so just to be clear then, so really, in terms of the visual effect that we see on that pole, really the only difference, and I don't know if we had an illustration up there to show it, but you have four-foot antenna, those were gonna be there regardless, it's the kind of two-foot-high boxes that kind of sit behind that.
Correct.
At the twenty to forty-foot-high level, depending on their location.
Correct.
At the lower level, the other ancillary, because we, I didn't really focus on the other items as much that were there because those were really the most visual impact, what else is happening on the lower end of the pole that would not be undergrounded?
Well, we complied with the city's requirement to underground supporting equipment. And the only supporting equipment is the SE meter pedestal, which we changed into a wireless telecommunications rate. Or, I'm sorry, wireless tariff rate with SE, which is a wireless meter that goes in a pole box. We don't consider, Verizon Wireless doesn't consider the RUs to be supporting equipment.
Okay, so and then, so you're gonna underground everything except the RUs anyway?
Correct.
Okay, and then the undergrounding overhead to do that work is nominal, I mean, because you're.
Just a pole box on the ground, twelve feet by, or twelve inches by ten inches.
And this difference in size by a factor of ten is because of?
For the meter pedestal, for the WTR?
Yeah, like.
Oh, it's just a small little device.
Sorry?
It's a small little device, it'll fit in here, in this size. You know those, you know those boxes you see that say irrigation?
Right.
The green cover?
Right, right, exactly.
We'll have one of those next to the pole.
Yeah.
And it'll have our supporting equipment in it.
Okay, so I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just a little confused, as you can see. Because your, your radio units weren't very big either, they're maybe twice the size that, you'd have two of them. So I just don't see how going from something roughly the size of a breadbox to three breadboxes required a box, which, you know, a vault which was twenty times the size.
Really cool.
I don't, I don't know if vaults exist in the capacity required so that, of a small vault that would be able to have some pumps, air conditioning, backup generator possibly, if it was, I don't think, I don't think anything is a, I don't know if the technology exists, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware, I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
So, I mean, just, so simply put, we're gonna underground the little bit of thing that was gonna be there. It's two smaller boxes that are up at a high level, visual impact, that's, that's the difference.
But they're hidden behind the antenna when you're looking directly down towards the blue sky.
Okay, now, I want to point one thing out, and, and I'd like, Bonnie, I guess, to comment on this. By undergrounding, you have to put in ballards on Coast Highway, and that reduces parking on Coast Highway. So I would assume this requires coastal permission.
But, but to be clear, does he still require ballards, even if he just puts that little box, he's still gonna service that box?
Green box, he doesn't, the big box, he does.
But do you still need twenty-four-hour access to that box to service it?
The, the box to service the WTR? The WTR is monitored by SE. I don't know if SE has twenty-four-hour access requirements like Verizon Wireless does.
Okay, so theoretically then, you don't have any service implications, no ballards required in this use case?
Correct.
In the case we're proposing.
Right.
Right, but if we put in the big vault, we have to go to coastal and get permission to eliminate three parking spaces.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, let's do a roll call.
Can I clarify the basis for the decisions here? For the replacement of the pole, the appellate has stated that there is no nexus for this requirement, is there's no ordinance or similar requirement mentioned, would that be the basis?
And they do not have the right to do it because they don't own the pole.
And you want to add? Wait.
It discriminates against them because the three other users of the pole are not so restricted.
Bonnie, they may not have the ability to actually execute that since they don't own the pole, right?
Well, the idea is the pole is gone, if the pole is removed, then they have to put a replacement pole in. And so basically, what they're saying is there isn't any reason to require that, is that?
Yeah.
Is that the basis?
Yeah, the basis also is discriminatory, they're one of four users, and we're only placing this on them.
You'd say it would put a disproportionate burden on, on the applicant? Okay, and then for the, the requirement on the maintenance, their argument is this is renoted and not needed, and you agree with that finding?
They do, it's electronic.
Okay, and then for the first one, requiring the underground vaulting.
Not requiring the underground vaulting.
And what, what's your?
Same thing, we, not practical or feasible and has not been widely, well, I don't know if anybody else has done it.
And you're able to make the findings for approval without requiring the undergrounding?
Correct.
Is that, do you agree, Commissioner Hill?
I agree.
Now, one of the, another reason is, there's no evidence of view.
You're requiring, you're saying that it's.
Blue sky view, and blue sky is not covered.
That it's not required to, to mitigate aesthetic impacts.
Of blue sky.
Yes.
Kathleen, roll call.
Is, are the findings gonna be the same for, there's three resolutions.
Yeah, they're all the same, aren't they, we heard it.
Well, two of them are on the land side and one's on the ocean side, right?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I mean, we considered them all, it's the same, I don't know how to change them. Now, you're gonna bring back a resolution.
Yes.
Right, three resolutions. I suggest that if you bring them back and there's some difference where we have to change them, we can hear that.
Yes, so then the motion is to bring back a draft resolution proposing the granting of the appeal for the basis that we're just enunciated, and then removing the requirements for undergrounding, for regular maintenance, and for the replacement pole. And the applicant has agreed to withdraw the final basis for the appeal, correct?
Correct. And just clarifying, you don't need any access to the RSU, whatever.
The responsibility for the handheld, because there's not so of SE, we don't control SE, SE is the one that accesses the meter.
And in the original review of this, Bonnie, when we, when you assessed approval initially, or, yeah, when, before they appealed, was there any impact to parking from that, that one device which is undergrounded that we're aware of, sorry, Adrian?
So, would there be any impacts of parking as a result of undergrounding the equipment? Or as a result of the handheld for the meter, is it the ladder?
Yeah, for the WTR, for that being undergrounded, no impact to parking?
That's right at the base of the pole.
There's no impact for parking there, it's adjacent, directly adjacent to the pole.
Adrian, you're good with it?
It is, it is, yes, and either way, they can be designed to allow cars to drive over them.
Okay, thank you.
Give it a shot, Kathleen.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
No.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Earring?
No.
Motion carries.
Move with adjourn.
Come back, if you come back, come back with backup batteries for the cell phones, that's a big, I mean.
Are we to discuss, are we candid here?
Yeah.
We'll vote to adjourn.
It's vote to adjourn. Yeah.
If you're gonna, we've had the vote, so we should, we don't have an item on here to discuss what you guys want in the future for wireless. We can have a brief discussion after, very quickly.
We'll do that, I'll vote to, motion to adjourn.
I caution that if you want to contact individual commissioners, not to contact all commissioners. We don't want to have any brown eye violations.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All the favor?
Aye.
We're out of here.